That quiets everybody down.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see some members of the public here. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 6:00 p.m. We always begin with a pledge of the flag. If we could all rise, face the flag, put your right hand over your heart. Let me get it.
Pledge of the flag to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody gets a pen. Okay. Exactly. Oh, golly. Okay, Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Tarnay?
Here.
Councilmember Shirillian?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Lesser?
Here.
Mayor Hoer?
Here. And if I could get an approval of the agenda from my colleagues. It's been motioned by Mayor Pro Tem and seceded by Councilman Shirillian. Call for the question.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Okay, so at this time is our time for public comments. So if anybody would like to address the council on any matter that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, including items on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do so. You have three minutes per item.
Just maybe a clarification, because I was asked by a member of the public.
Yes.
If individuals have a comment specific to the budget after the budget presentation, there'll be an opportunity for them to speak then as well, correct? That's a separate item.
Just remind me, because...
Because there's two separate items on the agenda. So they'll also have an opportunity after the staff presentation and council member questions, correct?
Well, then you wouldn't make, just like normal, you wouldn't make a comment now. You would make it about...
That's why I'm saying...
So, thank you. So usually what you would do is if you made a comment during public comments, you wouldn't then do it again after the staff presentation. But you are also welcome to wait and not make one now because you don't make the same thing twice. So then you would, you know... So, yes. Is that clear?
Thank you.
Do we all understand? So if there's a question or comment now, or a comment now, great. If not, you can wait till later. So are there any comments? No, please. That wasn't to keep people from coming down now. It was just...
Hey, thank you so much for having this meeting. On May 4th, as you may know, a pedestrian, 18-year-old terrorist, Bronleby, was killed crossing PCH at Person and PCH by a drunk driver with a suspended license. This follows a few months prior to that. An 18-year-old Ford Savela was in a car, hit by a car speeding at 70 miles an hour at Third and Sepulveda. On that same section of PCH, there have been, I think, three fatalities since December. And so I'm here just to ask you to please increase the policing of speeding and drunk driving. I've noticed that since the pandemic, car speeds have gone up, and it seems like policing has gone down. I particularly like you to increase policing on PCH, obviously, but also on Vista Del Mar, southbound, coming into Manhattan Beach, where there's a lot of high-speed crashes, and also on Rosecrans, heading westbound to the beach, where you enter the 35 miles an hour zone, where a neighbor of mine witnessed a hit-and-run, it was not a fatality, on January the 12th. Recently, a car crashed into a pole in front of the parking lot that is at the Rosecrans and Highland intersection. The pole was replaced, but the push button for the flashing crosswalk was not replaced. And I came here last, the meeting, when that flashing crosswalk was installed because of the risk to pedestrians there. So now we have a crosswalk that my 17-year-old son uses all the time and that people are using all the time to cross between the beach and the parking lot, or Fish Bar and the parking lot. And you can push the button one way, going eastbound, but not coming westbound. So if you could please replace the push button so that that works as intended. At the same Rosecrans and Highland spot, there is a push button. They have arrows on them to indicate which way to cross the street. And it indicates one direction when there are roads on either side of the island. And so I would like that to be replaced as well. So I would just like to reiterate that these are really tragic losses of life. And if we could increase the policing to lower the speeds and to discourage from people driving drunk, that would be much appreciated.
Thank you. And normally, we don't usually do... You could stop. We don't normally, we don't do back and forth, but I do want to say thank you, especially... I'll make a comment about Sepulveda in a minute, but for drawing our attention to the flashing light there on Rosecrans, that's duly noted. And I think at our last meeting, we talked about how our police department has planned, and I believe executed already, some what they call saturation patrols, which I said, "Well, what's a saturation patrol?" And it's where they're looking for saturated drivers, people who are obviously driving under the influence. So they are increasing those patrols, especially in that area. Is that... If I'm speaking incorrectly, I'm hoping a staff member will jump up and tell me. But so they're doing both, those kinds of enforcements, but also increasing the speed patrols on that street. In addition to, we've added, you know, the flashing sign that says your speed is, et cetera. And Caltrans is now talking directly to us. So they will be doing a safety study. And we won't stop there. Your points are well taken. But I... Some of them were addressed last. I just want to make sure you could hear that as well. All right, thank you. Other comments?
Your Honor, if I can ask...
Yes.
I understand that there's more police presence now on Sepulveda. Is there a plan to continue it? Or is that something we can ask the police to address?
Through the City Manager, let's just... Yeah.
I could check in with the chief and report back.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's definitely, it should be continued now for a while at least.
Oh, for sure. And then the other items that she brought up will be handled? Did we get the locations of those?
We got the locations of the things.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, other public comments now, or, you know, again, you can speak later after the staff report. Okay, how about on Zoom?
No request on Zoom.
Okay. So I'm going to close the public comment period.
Madam Mayor, before you do that, is there anybody here that, like, wants to make a community announcement or things like that as well?
We can. If you have an upcoming community announcement, you may... Up to a minute, so library reading time, or garage sales to benefit Neptuneians, something like that. Go through here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to the presentation of the fiscal year 2026 proposed operating budget. And one thing to note procedurally, this is a workshop. So we're not going to be taking a vote tonight on anything. But this is in preparation for approving the budget. We will be asking questions. We will be giving direction. But just for those who maybe knew the process, that's how we're going to proceed. So if we could have our acting director, Finance Director, Libby Brethauer, come up. And where are you? Oh, there you are. You're literally right there. Okay, come on up.
Apologies, I wasn't quite ready. All right, thank you. My name's Libby Brethauer, Acting Finance Director, and I am pleased to be here again tonight to discuss the proposed budget for fiscal year '26. So we first had an initial presentation last Tuesday night on May 6th, where we presented various, just kind of a budget overview. And we took questions from council, as well as heard public comments. And so over the... Well, we really had about 24 hours to turn around the agenda packet for tonight. So we did our best to put as much information as we, you know, had available to address some of the questions that were raised last week. So the first few slides of the PowerPoint tonight will address some follow-up items from last week. And then we'll move into department presentations on their operating budget. So one of the first questions that was raised, we highlighted the budget survey that was done through the end of March. We had, it was a very successful survey. We had over 600 responses. And so some of our top five priorities are... The number one was keeping our city safe, followed by fixing roads, making parks better, bike safety, and just parking in general. The, when asked, "What's the top places to fix", parking facilities was the number-one response. And the next, number two, was parks and rec facilities. So we wanted to highlight those. And, you know, 56% of our general fund expenditures are tied to public safety, if you add the police department and fire department budgets together. So we're already dedicating a lot of funds there. When it comes to parking facilities, so we have several projects included in the capital improvement plan that are tied to parking, including some annual facilities improvements projects. Of course, there's funding dedicated to the Lot 3 parking structure replacement. It's definitely not enough, but we have some funds there to help with the design. And then we've also allocated funds for the potential project at 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard and dedicated some funds there as well. So for the projects listed on the screen dedicated to parks and rec facilities include Manhattan Village light, field lighting replacements, some Marine Avenue Park fencing, the Sand Dune Park improvements, Manhattan Heights. And then there's also dedicated monies over the five-year forecast for just annual parks and park improvements and maintenance, which Director Lee will go into much more detail on in the next item. So some other follow-up items, and I can, I'll just kind of go high level, but feel free to stop me if there are questions you want me to go into more detail.
And if I don't see you, please go ahead and interrupt.
So a question came up about the vacancy factor that gets applied to our salary and benefits accounts. So it's something we look at every year. We look at the number of positions. Of course, it fluctuates every day. Someone could leave, someone gets hired. We're always, you know, recruiting for the open positions that we have. So currently, next year's budget includes a 6% vacancy factor. And each 1% is about $600,000. So it's kind of a reduction in our salaries and benefits that we build into the proposed budget every year. And this is a practice we've been doing for many, many years, since, before I started 10 years ago. And so it's to recognize that anticipated savings upfront in the budget. Because if we didn't do it, what was happening was vacancies throughout the year, we would, in the year, with a bigger surplus. And then, you know, council had to kind of dedicate those monies after the fact. So this kind of allows you to recognize that savings upfront and utilize it throughout the year.
Your Honor, if I can ask a question real quick. Since this is a study session and these are follow-up items, do you suggest that we ask questions during the bullets? Or do you want us to come back to it later on and go back to Slide 4?
I'm fine if the acting director is fine with asking it per bullet so we don't have to keep going back. If you don't, I mean, and I think that would be appropriate. So I think we have a question about this bullet. First question.
So just, you know, the vacancy factor, the $500,000 to the general fund, so 6% vacancy factor, is how much to the general fund? As far as, what's the value of that? I mean, I could do the math, but...
Oh, yes.
About $3 million?
Yes.
Okay. So we're taking $3 million upfront in the sense?
Correct.
Okay.
We're showing it in the budget upfront.
Correct.
Okay. Right?
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. So the next item, there's a question raised about our city debt levels. And so every year in the budget document, we do have a schedule in the appendix that lists all of the city's outstanding debt, the current debt service payments, principal and interest payments every year, and then also the outstanding balances. So I think it's identified on page 417 of the proposed budget this year. So that's a schedule that you can look for any year, go back in time. Will always be there as part of our budget document.
Question about that. So about, so that's the debt. I don't, I was going to ask, so how much is the payment on that debt from various sources? Well, I'm just saying, I mean, it's all... What is the payment on the debt?
Sure, that is outlined in the schedule on page 417.
Okay, I can look it up. All right.
So it does identify which fund each...
That's, yeah, I was going there, and that actually doesn't matter. As much as...
Well, I mean, it does matter because we do, you know, certain things are paid for out of the general fund.
Right.
For instance, Metlocks, debt service payments are paid for out of the parking fund, out of those revenues. So we do identify the various funding sources there.
Libby, might it be easier to just provide us with the table?
We've got the table on page 417.
Right, no, I'm earlier with the table.
Oh, sorry. I thought you were saying that we didn't have it. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you want me to provide it?
You're good.
Okay.
We're good.
And then I was just about to point out, so we did also include the future planned debt service payments on 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard that we're currently working on, and we anticipate those to close in August. And so the, you know, preliminary, I'd say, higher estimate that we budgeted conservatively at the higher amount that was calculated is roughly $627,000 for the new project.
Thank you.
I think the only follow-up would be, members of the public might be interested, of that 156 million, what percentage is the pension obligation fund representative of?
Correct, that 93 million of that amount is the pension obligation bond. Correct. And then the other piece of information, I think part of the question last week was, are we concerned about adding debt to our city financial position? And so I did have a conversation with our municipal advisor, Mark Young, from Kanan Public Finance this afternoon, just to get, you know... I know we've had internal conversations with him already as we were deciding how to finance the purchase of the US Bank property. I wanted to, you know, get him on record one more time today. So he did say with the level of debt service that we're talking about adding, looking at that and our overall financial position, he is not concerned.
Is there a threshold that he mentioned that he'd like to, a percentage of our citywide budget, per se, or looking at our five-year forecast? What is there, what would a cap be? And if you don't have the answer, that's fine.
I did take that from your question last week. So I did ask him that, if there was a dollar amount, and he couldn't give a dollar amount. And he also said it's, and the reason why he didn't want to is because situations change. And so, yeah.
Thank you.
Follow-up to that, and again, I want to allow you to get through your presentation. But over the years that I've had the privilege of serving on council, we had looked at paying off some of our debt in the past. My recollection is we had higher debt, aside from the pension obligation bonds, which we paid off to take advantage of our having resources to do so. Is there a rough percentage that is a best practice in terms of debt to resources? Which is maybe another way to phrase the question that Councilwoman Shirillian was asking.
I certainly don't have that number off the top of my head right now. We could look at that again if you'd like.
Thank you.
Proceed, by all means.
Okay. So the next bullet point, you know, we discussed a lot. And I think someone even joked during the meeting that during last week's meeting, there could have been new tariffs or less tariffs. And I think that happened again yesterday, where all of a sudden we got breaking news that, you know, they were easing off of them again. So I did, you know, we've, in the last week, had also had conversations with some of our city investment brokers to see, you know, they're in the market every day. Like, are you hearing anything else? You're an expert. And everyone's response is pretty much the same. Like, there's so much uncertainty, no one knows. This is, seems really unprecedented. So we also, you know, looked at some neighboring cities to see what they were doing, and everyone kind of addressed it in a similar way that we have, that there's just so much uncertainty. It's hard to know. But we are, you know, planning for CPI increases in our materials and services, or budgeting for that, or building that into our forecast. You know, we don't want to go too high and then really, you know, overestimate. But we, you know, we did incorporate some funds for it. And then, you know, we just have to keep monitoring it. And we do, you know, we'll come back with the quarterly budget report in the fall. We have the mid-year report. And at any time, we can, you know, address it, of course, at any council meeting if something really critical happens. We would certainly come back to at that time. And then, just as a reminder, too, we do have the $4 million economic uncertainty reserve, where we actually call it an economic uncertainty reserve in our general fund budget. So right now, we did utilize that for the purchase of 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. But as soon as we do the debt financing, replenish our general fund balance, then we will reinstate that $4 million economic uncertainty reserve. So that could always be tapped into if something needed to be done.
Great. Good to know.
So another question on our pension obligation bonds and kind of the schedule of the savings and how, when we issued the bonds in 2021, it looked at our existing unfunded liability at the time, which was $91 million is what we owed to Calpers. So issuing the pension obligation bonds, then that, you know, kind of traded that debt to Calpers for level debt, where we have a level debt service payment of $5.5 million per year, and we're no longer paying Calpers, you know, based on their valuations. So, but by doing that, we also created a pension policy to where we should be locking in that savings and not, you know, not just spending that on other services. We should be dedicating that money for future pension obligations, or the policy also gave us flexibility to dedicate some of that money to capital purchases as well. So, which we have done over the last few years. We dedicated some more money to the CIP fund, and then we're putting some money away in the Section 115 trust fund that we have. And so the savings column on the screen, second from right, that's the amount of these transfers that we should be doing every year as a prudent measure to transfer out of the general fund and maintain that fiscal discipline to where we're setting money aside for future costs. And so I think Councilmember Shirillian, this question last week was asking about the change and how you see the savings dollar amount go up because our costs to Calpers were expected to go up. So that changes that savings calculation. And you see it goes up and then hits a high mark in 2032, and then it starts coming back down to where, and then it's negative in the out years. So that was one part of the question, I believe. And then the column on the far right, the new UAL payments, we tried to address last week to make sure everyone was aware that, you know, we issued pension obligation bonds in 2021 that paid off what we owed to Calpers at that point in time. But we knew that wasn't solving our, you know, pension funding issues forever, and that there was the possibility that if Calpers didn't meet their investment rate of return that was expected, then our unfunded liability would go back up. And so that did happen over the last few years. So the fiscal year '25, the current year budget, we had to pay Calpers an additional $1 million. And in fiscal year '26, that payment is estimated $2 million.
And that payment would have been more if we, would we, if we weren't, if we hadn't done our own bonds, for our pension obligation bonds and paid off? I mean, would it have been...
That's a tough question to answer without doing a full actuarial analysis because every year, they're redoing their valuations. And so we paid off that debt in 2021. The next year...
What we did by doing it is we made it so that we could always budget the $5.5 million of bond service, or debt service for those bonds. And so that wasn't going up and down, correct?
Yes, so we kind of locked that part in. But the flexibility it gave us was that, so the payment schedule, the first column on the left after the date, that's what we would have paid to Calpers. So by locking in that level debt service payment, that then gave us the savings to allocate towards other things. So we would have paid that amount to Calpers. So however, we gave ourselves some flexibility here on what we could do with that money.
Great, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for bringing this. This is, you know, our largest expense. And I really wanted to be transparent about, you know, the next, not just five years, but going into the amortization schedule that you provided. And I appreciate the UAL payments kind of at $4 million, starting in 2030. But is that, that could fluctuate, too. So this is not, this is not telling the whole story. That UAL payment where it says 2027 is 2.7 million, it could be more, it could be less, but hypothetically, it could be more.
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry to jump and get excited and interrupt you, but it is dynamic. Every year, when, at the end of the fiscal year, Calpers reports their investment return, they use that to then create the new valuation reports. So if, you know, crazy things happen in the financial markets and Calpers has a negative, have, say, like, a negative investment return again, doesn't hit their anticipated 6.8%, then yes, are those numbers in the far-right column will go up even more.
And I think it's important for this council and everyone here that, you know, when you see 2035 and you see that the savings are less than your payment, that's kind of where you start not really having the support of savings because it's going to start to go down. So I just wanted to, you know, for everyone to see that and that this is our biggest expense. And it is, as you mentioned, dynamic. The only thing I would ask you is, you feel it's time that we brought in an independent actuarial and had them take a look at it? And not just rely on Calpers, but just get some data as part, potentially, during this budget process?
Yeah, we could certainly do that. It's something we've done in the past. Before we issued the pension obligation bonds, we did bring in an independent actuary to do an independent analysis. So it's certainly something we could do again, considering we're coming up on five years after issuing the pension obligation bonds. And maybe they could look at, you know...
Good idea. And we can talk about that.
The numbers of what, had we not been the, had we not issued the pension obligation bonds, what the picture would have looked like. And we could certainly try that analysis. So we could look at the cost of that and try to come back at the cost in the future.
Thank you.
Can we, can we tell Calpers to do a better job? That would be helpful. Okay, thank you.
They do have public meetings that have public comment periods.
There you go. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and this item, I'm excited to share. And even tonight, when I walked in and I saw some members of the public here, and they saw my giant binder, and someone asked me, "Well, do you have a, like, a Cliff's Notes version?" And I said, "Yes, we do." We managed to get it onto one page to highlight just some of the most important facts about the general fund budget. So something we can certainly continue on in the future. I think our team was excited to put it together to really try to just synthesize it down into a budget at a glance with some just key information and facts from the proposed budget. So I don't have to, I won't go through all of this, but we just highlighted some key features, the general fund revenues, expenditures, the anticipated surplus and what that includes, because this year, again, is unique to where the general fund surplus number includes the $13 million in bond proceeds, which is one time. And so trying to avoid confusion there.
For those that it might be straining their eyes to try and look at this on the screen, you will be going through this in some more detail, right?
I can.
In the budget to come, the presentation to come.
Well, yeah, most of these details were highlighted last week's presentation. We do have some copies upfront, if anyone wants to go grab a paper copy.
So not exactly, but sort of.
So most of this information, we did already go through last week. Items that were added, the bottom left, there was a question last week about grant funding. So we wanted to highlight that we do have over $40 million[1712.62] So we wanted to highlight that we do have over $40 million in grants that have been awarded to the city. Almost all that's for capital projects, most of it is. So we have 30 awarded grants that and then a few, like one grant's been submitted and under consideration. We have about six preliminary stages and so.
This is online too, though, on isn't it on our homepage?
Homepage, no, but it's on our budget page. But we can look at adding it to a link on the homepage.
Because that way, unless you have the giant, you know, micro, not microphone. Paint屏glass, thank you. It would it's hard to see. So you could if you're looking on your phone or something, you can make it bigger.
And then on the the bottom right side, we just added some other quick facts that we thought, you know, highlighted key parts of the budget. So again, the proposed budget includes placeholder increases for employee MOU increases. We've budgeted for CPI increases for materials and services and contract services. We've added some technology enhancements. The proposed budget includes funding for the five-year capital plan. And then we also reprioritize the 400 $50,000 in general funding expenditures to dedicate that money to other priorities based on the survey.
Great.
And yeah, so we're happy to put that together and answer any other questions.
I have a question real quick. This is great. We usually do a budget at a glance, which is four pages.
The snapshot, we've been calling that.
Sorry, at a snapshot, and this is one page. So it's really good. Is there a way to get a little further detail on on the grant funding? I know, you know, you mentioned a high dollar figure on the number, the quantity that we've gotten value wise. A lot of that, I think, is the storm drain or the.
The 28th infiltration project. And then also the IMBATS project.
So those combined are substantially a big chunk of that 40 million.
Yes.
Is there a way to kind of give us, you know, a little table of where the where we're trying to get grants and how much and?
Yeah, we could come back with further information if you'd like.
Little table. Yeah, thank you.
So that concludes my follow-up items I had from last week's meeting. And then for the rest of the the budget portion tonight, we were just going to start and go department by department. And each each department will focus on some general expenditures in their department, provide some information on performance measures and various metrics that they track, identify some key objectives the department has for the next fiscal year, and then also introduce any proposed budget enhancements that are new this year in the proposed budget. And so it might it may seem like an unusual order, but I think we started with information technology because our director is currently away at a conference, but he should be zooming in. So hopefully, he's ready.
Wow.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Well, good evening, Mayor Horwath and members of council. I'm Miguel Wardado, the city's information technology director. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you remotely this evening the proposed budget for information technology. The IT budget for IT starts on page 363 of the green budget binder. Next slide, please. The information technology department is responsible for implementing, managing, and protecting the city's technology infrastructure and systems, including hardware, software, cloud computing, network, and data. We strive to be innovative, agile, reliable, and secure when leading the organization through through digital transformation. Furthermore, the IT department supports broadcasting of the city's meeting and events like this one this evening. My department's program chart, oh, my department's program chart is pretty straightforward, as you can see by just that blue pie, because we are a single program. Major functional areas of IT include end-user support, which is our help desk, device replacement and patch management, infrastructure support, which includes network and server support management, network monitoring, and disaster recovery, application support, which supports the enterprise-wide applications, workflows, and application upgrades throughout the organization, and geographical information systems, which is our mapping data, website support, and core systems integrations to our GIS information. IT management and administration, which is the governance, planning, project management, finance management, contract management, technology procurements, and IT policies and procedures. The IT department is comprised of 12 full-time positions, and our proposed total expenditure for this next fiscal year is $6.5 million. Next slide, please. For our performance measures, IT tracks five performance measure indicators. Those are user satisfaction rating, percentage of first call ticket resolution, percentage of network infrastructure uptime, percentage of city application uptime, and user fish-prone percentage. There are two indicators that I would like to touch upon this evening. First is that of the network infrastructure uptime of 99.9%. This metric allows for us to have up to 8.77 hours of unplanned yearly downtime in a particular system. IT staff have worked tirelessly this past year to identify and address single points of failures throughout the city's systems and applications to maintain a 24/7 city hall. We continue to progress and we enhance and upgrade our existing systems, and I appreciate the support that council has given us given us throughout the years to be able to achieve this metric. The second item is our city user phishing prone vulnerability testing that we do. The targeted measure for next year is less than the 2% compared to the industry benchmark of 4.3%. As the as the threat landscape evolves and our threat actors get smarter and smarter, so should our cybersecurity education. IT will continue sending out users regularly simulated trainings to ensure that they are adequately prepared to identify these common threats of cybersecurity. If the user fails a phishing test, I'm sad to say that we will be that they will be asked to take additional cybersecurity training to make sure that we can get the training across for the users.
Not me, man.
Next slide, please.
I'm suspicious of everybody.
I'd rather you ask me if this is a good email or not. So as I mentioned before, the IT department provides a wide range of services and support that the city and for the city's use of technology, as evident in this slide. The IT department supports 1,406 end-user devices. That's a slight increase of 26 devices from last year's numbers, which include 439 desktops and laptops, a combination of 398 iPads and iPhones, 480 desk phones, and eight and a combination of 89 copiers, printers, and scanners throughout the organization. Looking at our numbers in the data center and network space, we are registering a 75% server growth with 97% of those servers being virtualized, as compared to last year's 120 servers with 85% of the servers being virtualized. This is indicative of our redundancy efforts and application growth. Currently, IT is supporting 123 applications and services such as Tyler Enterprise Resource Planning, Enterprise Planning and Licensing, Esri GIS, Enterprise Content Management, also known as Document Management Systems, Website Monitoring, and Granicus, just to name a few. The network is supported by 78 switches, 113 wireless access points, and six data centers throughout the city. I like to point your direction or I like to get your attention and go down to the Did You Know section and the and the graphic there. You will notice a large number of 1.1 million, which is 260,000 higher than last year's 868,000 average number of incoming emails that we receive and sanitize monthly. This proves the importance of the phishing prone vulnerability training efforts that our IT department puts on our city users.
That's true.
As you can see, it's a very, very high number. Next slide, please.
Those are just ones from council to council.
Let's see. For our key objectives, for fiscal year 2026, we have the replacement of the Enterprise Content Management System to better serve the needs and organization of the organization, including application integrations right out of the box and expanding workflow capabilities. Our next objective, as part of the proposed IT budget enhancement, is the migration of select enterprise systems to the cloud for improved scalability, simplified maintenance, security, disaster recovery, and business continuity. The applications transitioning to what is called the Software as a Service Platform are known as the Enterprise Resource Planning or our ERP system, Enterprise Planning and Licensing, and our Cash Sharing System. Upgrade of the city's audio, visual, and broadcast equipment in the police and fire conference rooms and Jocelyn Center auditorium are also of a high priority as we are looking to address obsolete equipment and improve the functionality for the use of those rooms. IT would also like to develop a five-year information technology strategic plan for the organization, which is which is a critical objective for this next year. The the reason being that I would like to realign technology investments with the city's business goals and improve operational agility and increase innovation in the organization. IT is also looking to enhance and modernize technology infrastructure, which is a multidirectional objective aiming to prevent single points of failure within the city network, work with city departments to proact and work with city departments to proactively plan and install technologies identified in the budget process, and implement patches, updates, and new releases to obtain the most value from the city's investment in technology. Next slide, please. Budget enhancements. So this first slide is it shows this slide shows the included city data center electrical grounding work that is need that needs to be done in the city data center and other data rooms throughout the throughout the city. Grounding provides a safe path for electrical current to flow in the event of a fault or surge, protecting both equipment and, most importantly, personnel from electrical shock. Next slide, please. This slide includes budget enhancements corresponding to IT key objectives for this next fiscal year, some of which were mentioned earlier. Although some of the enhancements that you'll see here are initiated by other departments, IT manages them due to the enterprise-wide nature of the services. An example of those are the addition of the closed captioning services for parking and public improvement commission meetings, and adding board and commissions to the agenda and meeting management system. Enterprise content management system migration and implementation services, which was mentioned earlier in an earlier slide, is also a prime objective for us. Other enterprise-related enhancements include the already mentioned Enterprise Resource Planning and ERP, Enterprise Planning and Licensing System, migration to the cloud. Other investments include the network, equipment addition and replacement as part of our technology innovation and effort as a multi-layer security protection of the city's critical data and digital assets. Additional additionally for this fiscal year '26 upgrading, I'm sorry. Additionally, the fiscal year 2026 includes the upgrading of the Technology System Engineer to a senior-level position, reflecting the increased complexity and importance of the city's technology infrastructure. The upgrade, the upgraded Senior Technology System Engineer will support operational needs, growth, workforce development, and retention by presenting a career growth path, enhancing job satisfaction and securing valuable talent. The proposed budget also contains the transfer of the technology specialist from the Police Department budget to the Information Technology budget. The realignment centralizes IT management for improved service delivery and carries development opportunities for the incumbent. The position will remain dedicated to supporting the IT service needs of the Police Department. In summary, even though IT does not have a specific council work plan items directly spelled out in the IT budget, we provide support, direction, and project management to all the departments to complete their technology-related work council work plan and department work items. This concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you so much, Miguel. I I had a question, if I may start, if my colleagues will allow. So if you go back, I guess it's page 11 of the presentation or page 63 of the staff, you know, the big budget or the binder, when you talk about desk phones and faxes, and there we have 480 of those that use service. And this is, you know, I'm sure staff is gonna, you know, groan when I say this, but are we really using desk phones? Are people really using desk? I know we're using faxes because that's a hard thing, but do we does everybody really use their desk phone? And I think the city manager is about to like say something.
All of our communication with the public is through our desk phones.
All that, okay, so I wanted everybody to hear that. So that's why that is on there. Thank you. So Miguel, you didn't have to answer that, actually.
Okay.
Okay, other questions? Go ahead, David. I know you have some.
I have one either for you, Miguel, or perhaps for our acting finance director. And that has to do with PEG funds to help underwrite some of the costs that were occurring for public-facing broadcasts. Do you know what the current amount of PEG funds are that we received from our cable companies, such as they are?
Remember those, yeah.
Significantly declined, but there still is a revenue that we received.
I do not know that number off the top of my head, but I do have Tatiana Patacova, who is in the office and might be able to walk down to the podium. She does most likely have that information and.
Yes, and I was also trying to pull it up because it is we do report on that information monthly with our financial reports that come to council as well.
Good evening. To answer the question, we've got time order PEG funds amount of $65,167. Verizon PEG funds are accounting to 54,772. A total of PEG funds 119 939.
And how are those funds being integrated into this budget is why I was asking.
We are using them for PEG-related activities such as supporting council meetings, broadcasting, and AVA activities that are related to city public meetings.
And do we want to remind people what PEG is?
This is Public Education Government channel.
Okay. Follow-up and follow-ups. Let's do one, two.
So I just I just want to compliment you because the PEG funds were a lot higher before. So you've actually been using them to get them down to 65 and 54. So.
Correct.
Compliments to utilizing those funds, and I appreciate the question being brought up. So I have another question, but I'll wait for the follow-up question.
Councilmember Franklin?
Go ahead.
Okay.
Thank you, Tatiana. Miguel, quick question. Can you talk to talk to me about how much of the cloud, how much of our servers, how much of our system is on prem on premises versus the cloud? I see one of your, you know, requests to continue migrating over to the cloud. And maybe a second part of that question would be, is the cloud being utilized just as a backup or redundancy to our current services on-prem? Or is on-prem just completely going away at some point? And are we going to be on the cloud?
Thank you for the question, Councilman Sherrillian. So yes, to answer the first question, we are migrating what equates to be 10 servers, which make up the Tyler ecosystem of of compute. And so those servers will be going up to the cloud. Currently, we are we have what we call an internal cloud meeting that we have our servers are virtualized in our environment on-prem. But we are looking at technologies and capabilities to be able to migrate more of our environment to, like I said, a subscription-based service so that we can have that better redundancy and not have to rely on internal resources for that redundancy or like for that compute, if you will. So the investment will be done on cloud servers and not on on-prem servers. And that next part of your question, could you remind me what that was, Councilman?
You answered it, but the question would be, are you is the city still investing in servers to be put on-prem or is or we're no longer purchasing servers?
We are still purchasing servers. Like I said, we still have the majority of our environment on-prem, and we actually just had what we call five cluster servers delivered about a month and a half ago. So we are still leveraging that and will continue to leverage them for the for the foreseeable future of three to five years.
Great, thank you.
And that's, you know, redundancy, that's so we can have redundancy, right? Because we wouldn't want it all to be in the cloud. Goodness.
Correct.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin.
Right, yeah. Thank you, Miguel. On the prior question about funding, you I already forgotten the acronym for.
PEG. PEG.
Okay. Now, that specifically is Frontier and Spectrum?
Yes, sir. It's Frontier and Spectrum that provides those fees back to the city.
Okay, and we made good use of it. In fact, we redid the entire electronics here and displays and everything in last year here in the council chambers, correct?
You are correct, sir, yeah. A part of the funding that we had was PEG funding that paid for for the broadcast equipment that's in the back room and some of the equipment that you see up there at the DAS.
Okay. Don't be surprised or shocked, but the Franklin household actually cut the cord recently. Do we get revenue from any of the other sources?
Yeah, we we do not. And that's, yeah, that's.
So you're guilty me into going back to Frontier.
Well, the point being, though, that those are diminishing over time. Well, the point being, though, that those are diminishing over time as more and more people are cutting the cord, I think.
Do we have a sense of that? Do we have a sense of that momentum of, you know, cutting the cord? I mean, do we see that number on a monthly or semi-annual or annual basis? The amount of money that's available?
I think the only way to really take a look at like how much it's diminishing is by doing the percentage of what we're actually receiving as far as PEG funding, and we can definitely come back with some stats to identify what the pattern has been over the course of a couple of months.
Great, thank you.
To kind of provide an indicator.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, any other questions from the dais? Is there a suggestion, were you kind of referring to we would wait till the end of the whole budget, or do you want to wait until the end of each section to open it up? I think at the end of budget.
Yeah.
Okay, end of budget, I just wanted to confirm. Okay, Miguel, I think you can go back to the conference, is that correct? No more questions, Miguel?
I'm going to be here for the night. I want to support my colleagues, so.
Look at that. All right, we appreciate that and everything you do.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since we have some residents here in council chambers, would it behoove us to have them talk to us about a specific item that they see during the process, just to get the engagement that we so desire?
I was thinking that we would do it at the end, all at once, unless you, you know, that's what I was thinking, so unless.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, because it's a lot to, we got to go through and get through it. So, okay, Mr. Codren, our interim community development director.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor Hoeworth and members of the city council. Good evening. I am Michael Codren, interim community development director. I'll be reviewing the community development department's proposed budget with you. So let's go ahead and start with expenditures. As you can see from the pie chart, the largest program in community development is building and safety, which includes 16 employees and spends approximately 3.9 million annually to deliver its services to the community. Its largest non-stapping expenditure is for consultants that check construction drawings for code compliance. The cost of these services is based on a percentage of the fee that the city charges to the applicant, enabling building and safety to operate under a 100% cost recovery model. The planning division is the next largest program in terms of expenditures at 1.9 million. Planning includes activities that allow for cost recovery, such as processing coastal development permits and conditional use permits, as well as activities that do not involve cost recovery, such as long-range planning. The city's efforts associated with the outdoor dining program is an example of an activity that does not provide for cost recovery, but contributes to economic vitality and other ancillary benefits to the community. Administration, code enforcement, traffic engineering, and environmental programs round out the activities and programs for community development, which has a total budget of 8.9 million and 39 regular positions. Community development has identified important performance measures to assess the level of service provided to our customers. These are pretty standard across community development departments in California and are focused on permit timeframes, response timeframes, and workload. It is notable that Manhattan Beach provides next-day service for building permit inspections. This is a high level of service that contributes to customer satisfaction and promotes economic activity in the community by keeping projects moving forward. Another notable here is that community development fields citizen traffic and parking requests, and we are able to review and respond to those within five days, I'm sorry, within 10 days 100% of the time. This slide highlights some of the workload measures in community development. These are for calendar year 2024, and a couple of highlights from this slide show that code enforcement is closing more cases than they are opening new, which is a good sign that we are clearing through backlogs and a big improvement over prior years. For 2024, building permits, building inspections, and planning applications all increased, which is a positive sign for the local economy. Another highlight is the Green Business Program, which completed its 13th year, certifying 110 businesses along the way. Our key objectives for the next fiscal year include compliance with legal mandates and implementation of housing programs, engaging with the public, and responding to inquiries regarding the residential overlay district projects, and outreach to the public to gain their vision for future uses on Lot 3 and 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard on those sites. And we're calling that Project Pulse to just help the community recognize that we're talking about these new downtown projects. In addition, our objectives include completion of the public parking management study, consistent with the city council's work plan, and implementation of strategies from the recently adopted Climate Action and Adaptation Plan, including education regarding recycling and organic waste, also an item on the city council's work plan. With respect to budget enhancements, community development is mostly staying the course for fiscal year 2026. We are requesting one-time funding for a new greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which is completed every five years, and funding for the Green Business Program to cover our membership and program materials, which were previously funded by a state grant that's no longer available. Finally, we have deferred an expense related to updating our traffic device monitoring systems, which we can pursue in the future when resources are available. All right, and that completes my summary of the community development department's budget. Our team of managers is here, along with myself, to answer any questions that the council may have. Thank you very much.
Great, I want to go ahead. You, Mayor Pro Tem Lester, then Councilmember Sherrillian, then I'll take a, and then Frank, all of us are all good.
I have a question with regard to how much staff time staff is spending on implementation of state-mandated housing laws. You mentioned that it's one of your top priorities, the objectives in 2026. What metrics might help tell the story of how much our community development department staff are now spending on implementing the laws? Obviously, there's policy documents and the piece that comes in enacting our sixth cycle housing element and what will soon be the seventh cycle. But in terms of the time spent on these proposed projects, I want to better understand how much time is going.
Can I, can I clarify something too? Because that was partly my question. Are you also asking about the public engagement?
No.
Okay, all right, that was, okay.
Okay, well, the public engagement aspect of it is a big component of what is new and different in terms of responding to those state mandates. There's also so much activity happening all the time, each legislative cycle, there are new laws being considered and adopted that our staff tracks and that we pay attention to in order to be prepared when new laws come into effect. In terms of the projects that come forward, you know, in some cases, when we talk about a ministerial project application, an application is submitted and it goes straight to the building permit process. So in some cases, there is less time being spent on a given project than if the same project went through numerous planning applications and other public hearings. So it's, it's an interesting dynamic from that standpoint, but if the concern is about how much, the sort of unfunded mandate nature, you know, right now, we do have an adopted housing element, a certified housing element, and so we need to continue to work through the programs and activities in the housing element. And we, I'm going to see if Adam Feinstone, our planning manager, can maybe just share some insights, but we continue to work through those programs to ensure ongoing compliance with our housing element programs.
Just a little focus. So my interest is, how is this adding to the workload, one? And two, to what extent are these additional costs, presuming there are added costs, fully funded by the developers or others to be fully funded, fully burdened, cost recovery?
I'll ask Adam for his perspective on that.
He's great.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the city council, Adam Feinstone, planning manager. I think just to start with, I would say that the housing legislation and other forms of legislation that are being dictated by Sacramento, they take a significant amount of time. When I started doing this work 20 years ago, it was maybe, you know, half an hour every month that you spent thinking about housing legislation and the like. Now it's probably, I would say, at least a quarter of my time every, every day is, on average, spent dealing with whether it's the legislation itself or implementation of public questions regarding, et cetera. So it is, it is a very heavy load, and, you know, my staff, I've got one, I've got two people who deal almost exclusively with advanced planning work, a lot of which is housing. I've got a couple of people who are dealing with the broad projects that are being discussed, so those are heavy as well. And even though, as Michael said, they're hypothetically ministerial projects that go straight to building permit, there's still a significant, significant amount of time that the planning division spends fielding questions, putting together information for the public. We had the forum a couple, what was that, last month? So it's, it's a heavy lift on our end there.
In terms of the recovery of the costs, and then more importantly, do we have sufficient capacity to catch what could be, let's say, overuse of some of these laws by developers, given that we have no discretion on these projects?
We're doing everything we can to do, to do that. I don't know that there's necessarily a, it's, it's not a matter of resources in the ability to catch things, so to say. It's the matter of that there's very little we can do in order to find solutions to the problems that are being put in front of us.
Okay, and I'm sorry, cost recovery and alternative.
Yeah, no, of course.
No, I mean, there is no cost recovery with these types of actions.
Are we then, as a city, incurring the added cost and time? You indicated it went from maybe 10% of your time in a month now to a quarter of your day. I just wanted, trying to better understand how we're recouping those costs, given that we're, this meeting's about budget.
Sure. The only thing that I would say that we do get some sort of a cost recovery would be with our general plan implementation fee that goes onto our plan, or onto our building permit fees. That covers some of the time that it takes for staff to update the policy documents, including housing element in the future, but it's very, very minimal compared to the amount of expense we have and the time we spend on it.
Just a quick add, if I may, because I like that question, I don't like the answer. I like the question. Is there anything precluding us from creating a fee structure to recoup these costs, since it is?
Increasing the cost that they pay, because we've always charged that fee.
It's really the general plan maintenance fee that we could use for future general plan updates and zoning code implementation, and that's tacked on to building permits. But other than that, for just standard review of legislation and other code amendments that come down, you know, the bills that are passed, I personally am not aware of any way to legally recuperate that, but I'll see if my colleagues agree.
Well, if we could increase, I think what they're suggesting is, can you increase that?
We recently did, through the user fee study.
Through the, okay, all right. Thank you. I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Sherrillian.
Hi, Adam, thank you for that answer. Good question. On the key objectives you guys have, the conduct outreach for parking lot 3 and 400 MBB, you need to describe a little bit about the outreach of how we're going to go about that. I know we haven't, we've got something coming back, talk about communication, but we want to make sure that the word gets out to a large populace to engage and come in and talk to us instead of, you know, just the paper or social media.
Right, absolutely. So I will start by saying, this gives me an opportunity to make a community announcement that I missed earlier today. Thank you, Councilman Sherrillian. So we will have our 400 MBB slash lot 3, so Project Pulse, as we've branded it. I will have our community outreach meeting on the 21st, so next Wednesday, at 6:00 PM at Manhattan Heights. So I encourage the public to come out and attend. We'll be kind of laying out what we have as far as resources and opportunities with these two lots or these two sites, and kind of gaining the public's input and ideas on what could be done there. So that's just the beginning of the efforts that we're going to be making. It will involve a series of meetings with the public, report back to council, and to obtain direction from, from yourselves as far as your feedback on what we hear from the community. And it'll, it'll eventually culminate in us bringing forward something that I think the community and the city council would be really excited to see, what that is as TBD at this point.
And isn't there a email address, what they call a friendly email address?
It is.
Yeah, it's www-manhattanbeach.gov/ProjectPulse.
That's it.
Madam Mayor, may I add to?
Well, I, I need, he, first, Councilmember Franklin, and then, oh, wait, wait, Sherrillian, wasn't done? Sorry, okay.
Thank you, Adam. Michael, if you may, thank you for your presentation and for you being here. Quick question for you, you've worked at other municipalities, have you seen anything in the short term that you've been here, it was four, six weeks, I'm not even sure, but that we can be doing differently to make, you know, the process work a little bit faster? We always hear that it takes a little bit longer to process things.
Thank you for the question, I appreciate that, Councilmember Sherrillian. You know, it is absolutely one of the things that I do and that I've talked to the staff about is my approach in leadership and in being a director of a community development department is in continual improvement. So, you know, across all of the services we provide, we're looking for how to do things better, specifically in terms of permit timeframes. You know, the thing that I've found in working with developers over the years is that the most important thing for them is not necessarily the speed with which we're, you know, issuing permits, it's the certainty, so that they can plan for what those timeframes are. And one of the things I've been able to do, working with the staff, is to have them explain to me exactly what their standards are as it relates to timeframes, both on the planning application side and on the building permit side. And I think the best thing that we could do is probably just publish, publish that information more clearly, make it more available to people on the website. That's just one thing initially that's come to me, come to mind, because that certainty is so important. But so far, it's not like there's any low-hanging fruit that I've found, you know, that's like an immediate thing, oh, we can, we can make a big difference right here. But it is something that we are always going to be focused on and hopefully can make some improvements during, during my time here. At least work with the team and do some evaluations, so that when the permanent director comes on here in the next few months, that we're able to help that person hit the ground running by, by laying the groundwork for them to come in and, and work on, you know, work with the team.
Thank you. One last quick question, and it might require the city manager. Any update on the environmental impact fee process as far as looking into that? Is that part of this year's budget?
I think you mean the developer impact.
Development impact.
And yes, we have a consultant on board, and we have initiated that process.
Do we know the timeline for it to return?
I believe the target completion to come to council would be November or December of this calendar year.
Oh, fantastic. Great, thank you. Thank you, Michael.
Okay, so Councilmember Franklin and Councilmember.
Great. Thank you. So, Michael, as you can imagine, we on council hear probably most about, you know, where are my permits? Why is it taking so long? That kind of thing. And if you could just make a comment to, you know, talk about the, I know there's been a challenge with hiring and things like that, but also, probably 50% of the time, it turns out to be, you know, user error. You know, they were asked a question, they didn't get back, you know, to answer about that question, you know, to help you finish your job. So if you can just take a few moments to address that.
Yeah, I think one thing to highlight here is that community development is 100% paperless organization as it relates to permits. And so in order to submit an application for a building permit and planning application, you need to go online, you can certainly come in and ask questions and get help that way, but the applications need to be submitted electronically. The feedback on the completeness of that application is also coming electronically. And so it requires, after that application is submitted, that the applicant kind of monitor their inbox, and if they get alerted that the application is deficient, then, you know, the sooner that they turn that around, the sooner that our staff can log the application and begin the work of processing it. So sometimes those, those things happen where there's, some time is lost in the back-and-forth communication. And I think that's a And I think that's a matter of time, and, you know, people becoming familiar with the system and how to make applications, and then how to be responsive. It's something that, you know, we're hitting our stride, I think, on the, using the portal and, you know, having this electronic system, this paperless system. So it has benefits, but it, there is a learning curve.
Okay. And in terms, now, I haven't used it as a user, but are they, is the user given estimates of when the permits may be ready, you know, so that they can give their customers expectation?
Yeah, we have standard timeframes. I'm not familiar specifically with the portal, if anybody else wants to respond to that.
Yes, there's a target due date, there's a target due date that is posted, and you can see that, and you can see the progress as to all the reviewers, who has reviewed it, who has completed it, who's approved it, who has comments. You see all of that, and then all of the comments are released simultaneously.
And just a thought, does it warrant a, you know, an outreach program to have, you know, some seminars, you know, for builders and developers, you know, to make them aware, go through training? Because it's only going to benefit them, right, for to know how the system works?
We have hosted the construction community a number of times, and we always welcome individuals who want to get accustomed to the system, to walk in. We have a public computer, we can walk them through at City Hall, and sometimes we help them submit it right there, and they become familiar with the system that way.
Okay, great. Thank you. In your presentation, you said, continue proactive code enforcement programs on targeted issues. It was my understanding that code enforcement is reactive. So is there actual some proactive?
There is, yes. So in particular downtown, we have proactive code enforcement, where we have one code enforcement officer that spends much of her time walking the downtown streets and making sure that there's the, you know, clear space on the sidewalks for outdoor dining and for signage issues, and just for a variety of things, to make sure that all the businesses are operating in compliance, and that it's a pleasant, you know, continues to be a pleasant environment for members of the public.
Okay.
And Councilmember Franklin, that was something that came up after, a few years ago, when the council approved additional code enforcement officers. We were able to add proactive code enforcement to the program.
Good. Yeah, and we, didn't we double the staff, or try to remember?
Not quite, but we did add about three positions.
Great, thank you. Good. And the same thing, not giving away any of our great secrets, but you have something about traffic device monitoring system, budget enhancements deferred, but not included in the proposed budget. Can you say what was deferred, so that we can?
Sure, I'd like Eric to come up and give you the specifics on that. The main thing I know is it's not a safety issue. We're not deferring something that would increase, you know, community safety on the streets, but specifically.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Eric Zamboli, the city's traffic engineer. With regard to the traffic monitoring system, it's basically a cloud-based interface to the 17 speed awareness signs and the 16 flashing crosswalks, so that we can monitor them in real time. So if there's an outage, there's something wrong, that we can change the settings on it, all remotely. It makes us respond faster, so that we can get ahead of the citizens' complaint.
So check the one on Highland that she mentioned. Something blinking with that, that shouldn't be a blinkin', so if you'll fix that, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Okay, Councilmember Ternay.
All right. Thank you, Michael. I really appreciate the presentation. I know this exercise is meant to look at ways we can, you know, shave our budget, but I'm wondering, after listening to all of our residents in the few preceding months about communications, and especially on the issue of the ROD, and people feeling like they're not getting the information until the 11th hour, is there room in our budget to send in, I was thinking either, like a mailer, depending on how much we have to, as far as the frequency, but kind of where people can log on and get information? I know I'm logged on to get our crime report, logged on to get, you know, the top weekly items that are going on. So something we can send to our residents, where they can sign up for the different issues that they may be interested in. Because I, what I'm seeing is, we have some major projects that are online, and it would be great that, you know, for our residents to have that information.
Great, well, certainly a worthwhile activity. And so, just in terms of the budget, let me ask, Ali, she came down to.
Yeah, I was going to say.
Thank you. Thanks, Ali.
You know, we have that capability right now. We purchased a few years ago a system called GovDelivery. And so that's how you're receiving all of those great newsletters from the city, your crime reports, or any number of topics that we have available on our website. So we could certainly set something up to, you know, I can work with the planning division on setting up a topic for, I think we do have a topic already, actually. We set one up for ROD, but sending out more frequent, you know, email notifications about that, if that's what you were talking about.
I was thinking about mailers, because where people can get that initial mailer and then log on. You know, I think what I'm hearing is that people don't get the initial information, so they can't, they don't know where to sign up, or they don't know to sign up.
I think one way to save costs on that, and I'm going to look to Libby, are we still doing anything via mail for utility billing?
Yeah.
You can do that, too.
I think it would be more cost-effective to tack on to something we are already sending out, because it is very expensive to send anything citywide.
That's a good idea, though.
I, yeah, I'd like us to, you know, consider that, whether it's through utility bills or whatnot. I think one thing that this, the key objectives, I'm sorry, was that the last?
Yeah, thank you.
I was appreciative of the key objectives, because first, you have complying with legally mandated housing requirements, and responding to the public inquiries regarding these proposed projects. And I think, as Adam mentioned, or you mentioned, you know, the community meeting, where we had, I think, over 200 people who attended regarding residential overlay districts. We'll have to do more of that, you know? And so, whether it's a line item in our budget, or it is more staff time, we need to inform the public, we need to hear the public, and meet them where they are, because it's very difficult to understand why we can't do certain things, or what we can do. And I thought staff did such a phenomenal job at that community, that meeting that we had. And yet, you know, the people who were there saw it, and it's, there's still questions. Not everyone hears it or understands why we can't do more, and I get it. I, you know, half the time, I don't understand why we can't do more, but I, right? So I think, to Councilmember Ternay's point, and we, we'll talk about it more, we can give direction as a council, so leave it at that. Let's see, what was, I think, I was just going to talk about how much I appreciate all the outreach that you guys have done, and Project Pulse is going to be exciting to hear about. So are there any more questions for this department? Okay. How are we all doing? Do we need a break? Are we good? Okay, let's keep going. I'm moving, I'm going backwards in my, uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Police.
Police. Here they come. I'm just going to stand up and stretch.
Think a stretch break?
Stretch break.
But I'm listening.
We're not, we're not running from you.
Not yet.
We know better.
Just a little bit here. Good evening. Did it go up anymore? Okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Christian Eichenob, Police Captain, Manhattan Beach Police Department. I'm happy to be here to present our budget tonight to you all. Just go back a little bit.
Oops, wrong way. Where's IT? Where's IT?
This was a test.
Drop the clicker.
Bad news, chief.
She's listening, so. Hi, chief.
I'm Chief Lang.
So I'm going to have to pull this up in denial right now. So our proposed budget for '25-'26 begins on page 201 of the book. Our proposed budget is $42,129,360, and includes 119 full-time positions. 66% of our budget goes to personnel costs, which we refer to as our boots on the ground, that provides for full complement of services, which include our four programs at the police department. We made it real easy, just like a couple boxes there in the pie, so we can all see them. Our four departments are administration, patrol, traffic safety, and asset forfeiture. We'll start off with our administrative bureau, which makes up 54% of our budget, totaling $22 million. Within this bureau are our police services and support sections, which provide the necessary support for the operational efficiency of our department. Under these sections are the investigations bureau and records bureau, which include our front desk personnel, the property and evidence bureau, community fairs, 911 and non-emergency dispatch services, and personnel and training, which is the office that handles all of our recruitment, training, and hiring. The patrol program, which includes jail operations, makes up 31% of our budget, and includes the most visible representation of our police department, our uniform patrol team. This includes our patrol officers, as well as our canine officers, and we refer to them, their partners, as their little furry companions. They serve as our frontline resource against crime, providing a visible presence in all areas of the city at all hours of the day. Other programs operated out of patrol include our SWAT team, our crisis intervention team, crime scene investigators, and our beach patrol team. Our traffic program makes up 14% of our budget and provides all manner of traffic services. This team includes our motorcycle and traffic officers, who are responsive to community concerns regarding traffic challenges, as well as providing enforcement in areas with a high incidence of track traffic collisions. The traffic bureau also manages special events in the city on behalf of the police department, which include our hometown fair, six-man AVP, the pumpkin race, and our holiday fireworks show. The program also includes parking and animal control, which provide enforcement of parking regulations and animal control management enforcement, and support to our patrol team during critical incidents. And finally, we have our asset forfeiture and grants program. We, as a police department, are always trying to seek ways to augment our budget with grants and alternative funding to enhance the delivery of police services, and keep our community safe while being fiscally responsible. We track and report crimes on a calendar year per the FBI reporting standards. Calendar year 2024 crimes versus 2023 violent crimes went down 13%, and property crime went down 15%. We're also happy to report that year-to-date crimes for calendar year 2025 are down compared to 2024. We continue to connect with our community through a robust social media presence, as well as to push messages out through our public safety notification system known as Everbridge, formerly known as NICSOL. And our social media engagement, we're happy to report, is up 5% from last year. We're actively working hard to fill open positions with quality candidates. We hired 18 employees, both part-time and full-time, last year, and so far, we've hired five positions this year. We're very proud of our team at the police department. We responded to over 16,000 calls for service and made over 21,000 self-initiated service contracts. That's important to note, because it means our officers are doing almost twice as many self-initiated contacts as they are being dispatched to calls. That's what we want and expect from them, and they're standing up and meeting that expectation. Our volunteers in policing donated over 3,000 hours of their time to community service, and our records unit processed over 2,400 public records requests.
Wow.
Our key objectives for 2026 include providing high-visibility patrols in both residential and commercial areas, presenting crime prevention and safety presentations to residents, businesses, and community groups, providing effective and efficient enforcement of animal control and parking laws, and ongoing education to maintain quality of life, and providing a safe environment for residents and visitors, and funding new equipment and resources to enhance frontline law enforcement, as afforded by state and federal asset forfeiture laws and granting agencies. The proposed budget includes upgrading the parking and animal control section's office assistant to administrative assistant, for a total cost of $616, to reflect the workload and technical knowledge required for the program. The proposed budget does not include two requests, which we are deferring until next year, one for upgraded interoperable radios, and one for a shared lead CSO vehicle, it's our community services officer vehicle. While we are able to defer these requests for one year, these are both essential needs that will need to be addressed next year, as they ensure that officers and employees have the tools they need to keep the community safe and provide the highest level of service.
If we could jump in for one second, I just want to clarify the radio replacements in both the police department and fire department. We are looking at potential lease purchase financing options to purchase them within the next, within the next year, which it would come back to the city council as its own agenda item. So I just wanted to be clear that it may not be a whole year out.
Great, thank you.
An additional change to the police department budget is that the police department's technology specialist position is being transitioned to the information technology department's budget. The position will continue to serve the police department, but primary supervision will be housed within the IT department, with the goal of facilitating cross-training of IT staff on police technologies and enhancing resources, resource availability for public safety. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you, and I can answer any questions.
Yes, Mayor Prochem Lessor.
Captain, at a high level, to the extent members of the public are crying out for greater enforcement, particularly following these tragedies that we've experienced in the last four months, five months on Sepulveda Boulevard, to what extent is the police department able to provide sufficient, does it have sufficient resources to conduct sort of traffic monitoring?
Thanks, great question, very timely, too. So as we speak, our officers are out there right now, conducting heavily saturated, the word saturated came up earlier, saturation patrols, traffic enforcement. We're, let me just be very clear here, we're on a mission. We're leveraging every resource we have. We have officers, like this young man up here, who would rather be out there doing what we're talking about than probably being in here. But we're doing saturation patrols, we're, as you probably can see, there's message boards all along Sepulveda. We are using our OTS grant money. We have a checkpoint set up for July 23rd. Graduation's coming, so we're very sensitive to the risks that come with graduation parties and whatnot. We'll be out there in full force. So we're out there every day of the week, weekends heavily. We are tapping into our regional resources, too. Our motto here is that we don't just think like a small city, but like we think outside our walls here. We go to whatever lengths we have to. So, if that answers the question or not?
Thank you.
Yes, Council, I'm going to go this way first, just to, you know, break it up a little bit, help that. Councilmember Ternay, boom, boom, boom.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on the question regarding safety, especially on Sepulveda, can you explain to me, as I understand it, we have two D, funding for two DUI checkpoints a year. Can you explain to me what that entails, and who funds that, and why we don't do more?
And to tap, and to tack on to that, because I was going to be, explain that, and also how the saturation, how you can achieve something without the checkpoint, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, thanks for the question. We're allowed funding twice a year for checkpoints. The funding typically comes from the OTS, or Operation Office of Traffic Safety. Let me just, just go into some detail here on checkpoints. Checkpoints are good, however, we see the, we gain the most yield from our saturation patrols, like what we're doing now, our regional DUI task force, where we partner with neighboring cities, we partner officers up, they go out there, and they hit the streets. Checkpoints are good, but they, there's not, it's not the monetary burden of having to do them, it's just the logistical planning, the coordination. We have to plan those months out, we have to message them to the public, we have to have valid speed surveys to be able to do them. Everyone knows they're coming. One person will drive through it, text everybody else, and they know it. They're great for visibility, they're great for PR, but we tend to gain more benefit, especially right now, from just going out there and just unleashing all of our resources on the problem. So we, we're focusing on that more. We are doing checkpoints, we will be doing at least one this year. We know that they're important to do, and you'll see them on Sepulveda. But we're, we're kind of trying to use a multi-prolonged approach in this, using our motorcycle officers, DUI cars, patrol officers, regional partners as well, a lot of messaging. We're going to be pushing out a lot of public service announcement stuff, working service announcement stuff, working with our school district, too, passing the message out to them as well.
Do we have anything currently set up with the school district partnering with them? Just because prom is coming up and graduations coming up?
Our school, our school resources officers have already communicated with the district, and they're already working on that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Is there, what's the thing that we would do every other year? Fifteen minutes, what's it called?
Every fifteen minutes.
Every fifteen minutes.
Yeah. Are we doing that?
We haven't done it in a while. It's something that we, we tend to put back in, into, under our schedule.
Yeah.
It's been a little while.
Yeah, it has been a while. I remember they did a lot. Anyway, just for those who don't know, it's, well, it's quite intensive between the school district and the police, and they stage a crash. I don't think we need to do it this year, I think it would be triggering.
Too much, yeah.
But I appreciate the saturation.
It's beneficial, we have a lot of, there's a lot of value in them, for sure.
Yeah, a lot of value. Okay, so, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Shirley, then to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Captain, for that. Couple of, I'm going to double piggyback on that, Sepulveda. Is there a short, medium-term, a long-term plan for Sepulveda? I know you're doing saturation now, you're taking a look at it. You know, this is a, this is kind of a reaction to what's happening, and I know you guys patrol it regularly prior to that, but you're hearing a lot more about it now. Is there a plan that's going to be put forth together that we make sure that we continue this momentum of, of kind of reacting to what's been going on?
So putting it into sharp focus is what we're doing right now. We, we are talking about bringing back our regional DUI, our, our department's DUI car, which is a full-time position, which that's, they focus solely on that. We're talking about bringing that back. Other than that, we are putting officers out there in cars, working around the clock, but specifically targeting the, the high, the high-peak times. In our traffic office, we have, our officers use traffic measuring speed devices, LiDAR they're called, used to be called radar. We are right now training officers in the use of those, so they can go out and work speed to try and mitigate some of the primary causeful, primarily, yeah.
You got it.
May I? Excuse me.
Of course.
Primary collision factors, which speed, turn, unsafe driving in general. So we're putting officers out there who are, we're getting them, like, traffic trained, which ordinarily, it's not standard for us, but we are, again, leveraging every resource we have on this. But as far as the long-term plan, right now, we're putting people out there, using overtime. We are planning the summer already, so we have, we're kind of redirecting some of our, our staff, like our school resources officers, resource officers, they're going to be deployed in addressing the situation.
Right.
And just, just continuing our, our commitment to the overall problem.
Thanks. And do you see it as a, a challenge for Sepulveda because of the topography of Sepulveda, how it goes up and down, there's a lot of blind spots, is that?
So I used to be a traffic officer, I used to ride a motorcycle, and I'd sit there at Taco Bell every morning.
Yeah.
And like, I'd get them coming down the hill, I'd get them coming up the hill. It, it's a, it's a main highway through our town, and it'll always be a problem.
I think you got me there. No, I was up in Hanby's Boulevard.
So, follow up on that question.
I was doing my job, is what you're saying.
Is there any new technology, or have you heard? I recently read something online about utilizing drones to pick up some of the, share the information back to you guys.
So drones have piqued our interest in a number of different areas. I, I don't have any personal, personal knowledge of what you're talking about, but I know it's out there. Is something to follow up on, we can look into?
Two more quick things. You mentioned you added five positions, how many did we, how many do we lose, in a sense, that left? We added five positions, did we lose any officers?
Can I clarify? Are you saying positions or people?
People.
Because people retire, but position, we did add positions.
Yeah, but you added, you said you hired five people.
Right, are you referring to people that have?
Left. Did that replace five people that left, or is it?
Yes.
Okay. And then, one last thing, your key objective is to provide high-visibility patrols. I know you guys did a bike patrol, started last year, and is very successful, very visible downtown and all around. Is that something that you're going to enhance, we're getting into the spring and summer?
Mm-hmm.
Are you looking to add, like, another two, or?
For right now, we're going to stick with two, because this is our primary concern. We're addressing this with every resource we have. And quite honestly, I'd rather have people up on Sepulveda in motorcycles and cars where they can get, bicycles are great for a specific application, and they're great for our community to see them out there. We like it when our, our cops are out there on bicycles, but we're not talking about expanding that bike program at this time.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, we do have Police Chief Johnson on the call, and she raised her hand.
She raised her hand, is that all right?
Yeah.
Would you allow the, before your question, the chief?
Oh, sure, oh, yeah.
Yeah, she raised her hand.
Oh, okay.
Is, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay, Chief, Chief Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Horwath, and members of the council. I apologize for not being there in person today. I'm in Washington DC with eight of our folks, and we just finished the police unity tour, two-hundred-and-fifty-mile bike ride. But to expound upon Councilmember Shirley's question about bike patrol, Captain Ikenlov is correct, right, currently, we have two officers assigned to bicycle patrol, but ahead of our summer deployment, which begins at the beginning of June, we will have four officers dedicated to patrolling our downtown beach areas, both in cars, on, on foot, and in bicycles. So we're kind of doubling that, but it's different than our dedicated bike patrol. But we want to be very proactive during the summer and have folks, so we'll have coverage six days a week for our beach patrol folks, the only day a week where we have partial coverage is on Wednesdays. And so while we are definitely endeavoring to be very responsive to community concerns related to speed in a number of areas in our town, but especially on Sepulveda, we don't want to forget that summer is upon us, and with this last weekend being quite warm, we know how busy it can be, and so we will have folks deployed, actually double the number of folks we had last summer, deployed six days a week, to ensure that we're able to handle those community concerns as well.
And Chief, I know at some point last summer, correct me if I'm wrong, did we increase the number of folks, officers on patrol during certain hours, starting like Thursday afternoon through Sunday evening? Was that, is that like, kind of how we're doing it? Because those are the really, really busy times, or is it just four officers, different vehicles, six days a week?
Madam Mayor, you're correct. We increased that coverage from like Thursday afternoons through Sunday, but the difference this year is we're doing that every day of the week, except for Wednesdays, when on Wednesdays, we'll have partial coverage for that. So we'll have at least two officers every day providing that coverage. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. Okay. Councilmember Franklin.
So, Captain, the, the other issue with the DUI checkpoints is they're very expensive, aren't they, to?
Yes, they are.
To put together, that's why we get grant money from OTS and the like, okay, so, I mean, and we, and we have two a year now?
We haven't had one this year, we're, we're putting one on in July, and we may do another one around the holidays.
Okay, all right, great. If there's some way we could increase that budget, or find other grants, or something like that, that would, that would be helpful, I think. So, I don't remember when, I think it was in the fall, you know, we had a surge in robberies on the east side at homes, you know, where they would break in, use ladders, go over the fence, use ladders again to go up to the second floor. We conducted a, a, well, it was called a lawn meeting, which is generally when you meet with people within the neighborhood, but it grew substantially, and we held it at Pennycamp Auditorium, to another full house there. Do you see an impact, like, after, after something like that, where events kind of peter off, or, you know, taper off, because residents pay attention and, and do what they're asked to do, or, you know, implement those suggestions?
Yeah, I'm going to clarify something, though, first, if I may. So, you, you refer to them as robberies, there is a different, they're a totally different classification.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
I'm going to say, they're burglaries.
Burglaries, yeah.
Important, because a robbery is, you know, when you think of robbery, think of somebody with, you know, street robbery or something, just to clarify. Thank you, though, for mentioning that. So, we call them front lawn meetings, and Chief Johnson started doing these. We typically have them in, in following an incident, or a series of incidents, so that the community has a chance to meet with us, we interface with them, and we go over what we're doing about it. They, they promote awareness more than anything, because everyone's doing a good job of trying to fortify or make, harden their target, but there's never enough you can do. I mean, whether it's cameras, whether it's, the biggest thing is like, just calling us when these things happen. Don't text your friend, or, sorry, but don't text you guys, or, you know, like, just call dispatch, the non-emergency number. If it's, if it's an emergency, call nine-one-one. We respond quicker that way, it helps us. We rely on social media a lot to put this messaging out, it gets people to lock their doors more, their homes and their cars, and just let's harden the target. Take things, don't leave things on the front seat of your car, don't leave the keys in your car. We still have incidents where the home is unlocked, the cars are unlocked. So, it, it promotes awareness, and it lets the community know that we care, and we're out there, and we're responsive, and we tell them what we're doing about it, too. And we want to encourage more people to join Neighborhood Watch, we want more block habits, we want more involvement with that, because everyone's our eyes and ears out there. And it, it helps us, it's instrumental in us being able to do our jobs. We want to protect this community, and that's going to help us do it.
Great, okay. Is there a chance, maybe we could, you know, do them on a little bit more regular basis, you know, just to get more residents involved? I mean, that was a great information session, a lot of terrific questions, and I'm hoping, you know, I mean, we've sort of hear, just from a media standpoint, that it seems they've, you know, these kind of burglaries have, have tapered down a little bit.
We also have stepped up our town hall meetings, if you've noticed, we do them now quarterly, which give everyone opportunity to get updates, not just when bad things happen, but so that we can partner more with everybody, and we just had one recently. So we're continuing those, and we have those front lawn meetings and town halls. We have them regularly, and we have them in different parts of town. We don't want to neglect a certain area of town, we'll do those, and we're not, so.
Okay, great, thank you. And one thing I remember Sacramento passed a law, I can't remember what they called it, but it was not allowing cars to park within twenty feet of a corner, to increase visibility of when a pedestrian wants to cross a street, you know, at an intersection. Does anybody know the name of that? It was a?
D-lighting.
Sorry?
Crosswalk d-lighting.
Crosswalk daylighting. Says our traffic engineer.
Yeah, and, yeah, and then maybe also for city, city traffic engineer as well. Are we implementing that with, you know, red zones or anything like that? Because I just noticed there are some intersections that, that don't have that visibility, and, you know, I'm, I'm not always in favor of Sacramento micromanaging us, but in some points around town, I think it would be really helpful to increase visibility.
Yeah, having local control is important, especially with that. We typically, the genesis behind those is typically a complaint, and then we rely on our traffic surveys and studies, working with our engineering department, and then our traffic office, too. We message it, we do enforcement, education to deal with them.
Yeah, okay. Have you had many citations that you can think of, or, I, I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot, because I'm sure it's not a?
I mean, I don't know. I, I'm sure we have, we, we definitely go out and do enforcement, yes.
Yeah.
You remember, maybe, might remember on Fifteenth Street, as you pull out of our PD driveway?
Yes.
There was like all the temporary parking, and?
Yes.
Like, that was creating an issue for us, so we went out and dealt with it, and we continue to.
Oh, my gosh, what did you do to deal with them? Tell them?
Kids.
No, that's, that's fine.
Information.
Yeah, okay, great, and that's all that I have, thank you.
I believe that Chief Johnson has raised her hand again on Zoom, let me see, I believe, yeah.
Come on, Chief, help me out here.
Thank you again, Mayor Horwath, and members of the council. I just wanted to provide some additional information to Councilmember Franklin's comments and question about DUI checkpoints. The Office of Traffic Safety usually gives us funding for one to two checkpoints a year, and having administered that grant before as a supervisor, where I worked in H, so we had six a year, it is very much personnel-intensive, more than cost, because the grant is, the grant covers the personnel costs, but it's definitely personnel-intensive, because it's more than what you just see. You have to have a traffic plan for any roadway that you use, that has to be approved by a traffic engineer. It requires a number of personnel, not only to conduct any physical sobriety exams that must be done, but there's a much data that must be collected in order to be in compliance with the law, and that includes the number of cars that go through, how many cars you stop, how many people you arrest, and a number of other metrics that the Office of Traffic Safety requires. So all that data collection requires people to collect that data. And the stated purpose from the Office of Traffic Safety for these checkpoints, as Captain Ikenlov stated, is awareness. You know, we are required to advertise them, we're also required by law to provide people the opportunity to turn out of the checkpoint. We would probably have to provide a legal place for them to turn away from the checkpoint if they don't wish to be detained. And so all of those things lead for, that lead us really to have checkpoints be more of an awareness issue, more than, more of an awareness metric or means than anything else. Where we find ourselves making the most arrests, or in those places where Captain Ikenlov stated, in saturation details, where we're able to not be as visible, but be in places where people conduct law violations that lead us to pull them over and make arrests for DUIs. And so, while the checkpoints are important, and we will be doing at least one this year, where we really find the enforcement metric to be effective is in our saturation patrols, rather than those DUI checkpoints, just because of how well they're advertised, and in the day, in the days of social media, everyone texts each other and tells you, you know, tells each other where to avoid, because you don't want to get caught in the traffic swirl. And I just wanted to just provide that, a little bit more breadth to that information about the checkpoints, and it's not an unwillingness to do them, it's how much personnel and action they require to make them happen.
Appreciates that context, Chief.
Thank you.
Is that the last of your questions?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay, I, I want to say, before I get, just to some housekeeping for us, I so appreciate it, Captain Ikenlov, that when you stood up, you said, this is a mission for us, this being Sepulveda and reducing, you know, making it more safe. It, it is a message that I hope the community hears, and I hope that is very successful. So I want to thank you for, you know, there was total commitment behind that, and I really appreciate that. But I think you've, you've done your part, and, and there'll be no more questions for you right now. What I'd like to say to my colleagues and suggest to the public, that we take a short break. When we come back, I would entertain, if my, if my colleagues would be open, to questions from the public on what we've heard so far, or comments from the public from what we've heard so far. I know we lost a couple of our Kiwanis and Rotary folks that, that left, but I see you, Steve, and, you know, there's Paul, and Rita, and Stefan, and yay, you guys heard our plea to please come to the budget meeting. But so, when we come back from our short break, we'll entertain a public comment section, then continue. We still have a few more departments, plus our CIP, but I have to say, these questions have been so important. This is the most important thing we do. If this meeting goes a little longer, I think it's important. So we're going to take a short break, we'll be back here at eight o'clock for more frivolity. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
You want to go live?
Yeah, I want to go live.
Peggy, can we go live?
All right, colleagues, staff, members of the public. We are back for our budget presentation. And we are going to begin with our fire chief, Michael Lang. We're going to, no, we're not. We're not going back to public house. Sorry, that's why you're up there. Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comments. So please come on down, three minutes. Thank you, colleagues and everybody.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager. First of all, I want to say what a wonderful presentation and binder. I actually tried to read through it. It wasn't possible to get through all of it. But really, really hats off to a really good job. The transparency and the details is really outstanding. So, so thank you for that. A couple items. One is last week, we spoke about ability to increase city revenue. And I'd like to hear some comments on that. What are some opportunities? And what is the size of that potential that we might have? And what actions could we take to drive additional revenue? The next one is on salaries and pension costs. I'm still trying to get smart on how to read all this stuff. You know, I read in the budget that the total salaries on page 76 amounted to $73 million and change, okay? And, you know, total employees of 354. Can you help me understand, does that 73 include contributions to the pension fund? You know, if, if I look at that number and I use a load factor of 1.4, you know, I get an average salary of 148K. You know, and I looked online, the average salary in California is 96. So we're paying our, you know, one and a half times the average California salary, which makes sense, we have a very educated department. But is that reasonable? Is it not reasonable? But can I just, can we just understand a little bit more about how that works with the pensions? Okay? And then the third item, that this was in an email I sent earlier, is maybe something to think about as we go through the remaining topics is, how can we feel comfortable about these numbers? You know, as a resident, I see this, you know, it's my second or third time coming to the budget meetings, and it's a huge number, okay? How do I feel comfortable? It's just, it's the city of Manhattan Beach. In the consulting world I lived in and also the construction work world, what I tried to do was always give comparable costs. So for example, you know, when one is estimating a house to build here in Manhattan Beach, we looked at the 10 homes that we built in the past. We said, okay, here's how much these costs and what the end costs were. Boom, boom, right? Very similar if you get an assessment or, you know, on your house, they look at three or four other homes in your area and kind of say, this is what I think your house is going to cost. So I'm, I'm looking for some kind of comparable information on our budget that gives me comfort that the numbers are good, okay? So otherwise, they just stack up, and I'm just not sure I can feel totally comfortable about those. Thank you for your time.
Hello, everyone. Thank you very much for allowing me to ask a few questions here. My name is Paul Wafer. And not surprisingly, I want to ask a little bit about salaries. And I saw that same $73 million number. And I did some computations and came up with the average cost for FTE at $197,088, including the pension and all the benefits. So we have 354 employees. That's a, that's a big number for the average cost per employee. So I really implore you to take a closer look at that and see if there's anything that can be done. In terms of overtime, it's kind of interesting because last year's budget called for 5.5 million in overtime this year. And that was the adopted budget. The actual ended up being 7.2 million. And I know there were some extenuating circumstances with the fires and all that. But now I see for next year, the budget is back down at 5.9 million for overtime. So I'd like to know what measures the management take to control overtime? It seems to me that it's, if there's more overtime, you just pay it versus controlling that overtime and asking the staff to do something to mitigate those increased numbers. So I'd like to see from the budget or from, from someone when they're talking about the budget, how they're going to control that. The, the final thing that I wanted to bring up has to do with the performance measures that you're showing on the screen for each department. I think they're great, and I, and I think that it's, those are a good thing to have. But I think you also have to have productivity measures. You're talking about plan checks and what have you. For plan checks, what is the number of hours required to complete a plan? And so that as you are, as those numbers of plans increase, you know how many more budgeted hours you need in your employees to meet that? And if they go down, you know how many employees that number should go down? Same thing with potholes, you know? How long does it take to fill a pothole in the street? Or how many FTEs per mile of paved road are you using? These are, there are some standards out there that the city could use for some of this stuff. And I will end with that, and I've got eight seconds left. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Thanks.
You know, I want to say, and I, if this is wrong, I, we already had our community development director or acting or interim director speak, you know, about plan checks. I kind of, I hear you, and I think I've seen that question asked before. And I'll, I'll say this, I'm not a planning director, nor do I play one on TV, for those of you who remember that commercial, Marcus Welby. But I do know that every plan is very different, whether it's residential, whether it's a one-story house, three-story house, you know, 8,000 square foot home, you know, new building. Maybe that's some of it, I don't know, but maybe we can get them at the end and we can talk more about that offline. So I appreciate that question. So now, are there any other, oh, are there any on Zoom?
Stephen DeBates?
Mr. DeBates.
Thank you, Mayor, and then thank you for the City Clerk for making, making this time available. I wanted to make everyone available or advise that this Friday, May 16, from 8:30 to noon, there will be an older adult health fair at the Jocelyn Center at 1601 North Valley. And some of the health screening that will be provided is testing for anemia, blood pressure, bone density, cholesterol, Doppler thyroid. And transportation can be made available through Dial Ride. And if you need a Dial Ride, you can call them. Their phone number is area code 310-545-3500. And parking will also be available all along Valley Drive and at the parking lot adjacent to Jocelyn Center. And so thank you to the City of Manhattan Beach, the Parks and Rec Department, Grunion's, Pure Bean, and the Venice Family Clinic for sponsoring that event. And if I could take one more second to thank City Council and the Parks and Rec Department for putting on the volunteer dinner that was recently held. It was held at the Comedy and Magic Club down in Hermosa Beach. And approximately 200 volunteers that volunteer their time in the city of Manhattan Beach attended that. And they were treated to a delicious meal, quite a few comedians, and raffle prizes. And I want to thank specifically Michelle Ami for, she puts this on every year, and she just does a bang-up job, is so phenomenal. And Mary McCabe also helps her get this all organized. So it's just a great event and a great way to thank the hundreds of volunteers that volunteer their time to the residents of Manhattan Beach. And finally, if I could, I wanted to recognize Barbara Landon. She was elected as the Volunteer of the Year for Manhattan Beach. She has volunteered over, for over 10 years in many capacities at Parks and Rec and the older adult program. And congratulations to Barbara for, for her nomination and appointment to the Volunteer of the Year. So thank you very much for that time, I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, are there any other?
Yes, we have Joe Lampkin.
Okay.
Oh, good evening, City Council, Mayor. I'm sorry I couldn't be with you in person tonight, I'm sitting in my office still watching you on Zoom. I wanted to just, I know that Stefan mentioned the revenue generating ideas. And one thing that, again, keeps coming up is the, the amount of time that it is taking for both businesses and residents to get permits through the process. And I, I know that, you know, there are a million ways to skin a cat, and you've got, add more employees, outsource more things. But the thing I'd like to have everyone think about is if we could think about how much time equals money in that scenario? Because if a permit for a business takes six months to a year to get all the way through before construction begins, that's that many months without sales tax, without business license tax, without other types of revenue generation. And the same thing with a residence, it's property taxes. And those are, those are big factors in terms of what plays into the revenues in our city. So rather than looking for additional ways to generate revenue, I'd like to look at how the length of time for permits could be reduced in order to generate revenue more quickly from the same, from the same projects. That's it.
Thank you, Joe.
There's no additional request on Zoom.
All right, if we could have Michael Wang, please come on down. Oh, here you are. Tell us about the fire department.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Horwath and City Council. Mike Lang, your interim fire chief. And I would propose doing the budget tonight, and it actually is my last budget, so.
Oh, so sad for you.
Kind of bittersweet, so.
You don't look like it's bittersweet, I just wanted to say. You've got this giant smile, I'm just going to be honest.
The fire department budget can be found on page 233 to 266. 266. So the fire department budget consists of five divisions, fire operations, EMS, support services, community risk reduction, and admin. And out of those five divisions, we have 41 employees, a total budget of $19.8 million. And keep going. Some of the matrix I'd like to highlight tonight are actually a direct result of council decisions over the last couple of years of really improved productivity and our, our ability to cost recover as well. You can, the first one is our plan reviews. Prior to being a civilian fire marshal position in Fire, Civil Fire Marshal Bureau or Fire Prevention Bureau, excuse me, we had to contract most of those out. You can see now, last year was 75%, this year we're at 100%, and then going forward, we should be at 100%. That direct result to that is recovering all that cost and cutting our inspections in time, the turnaround time in half. We don't have to send it out, it's in-house, everything's done in-house, our turnaround time is really quick. Other things is our life safety business inspections, we're consistently doing that at 100%. And then our result of another thing is a second rescue coming up last December, you see our response times are getting better, we're up to 59, just shy of 60%. So we're seeing that creep up again, just, just another direct result, a decision you made in supporting our operations division there. Some of our by-the-numbers, we're consistently stay right around the 3,800 calls per year. We have an average response time of 4 minutes and 53 seconds. Our busiest month continues to be August, busiest day is Saturday, busiest time is between 10:00 and 2:00 PM. You can see our call breakdown there, most, majority of our calls are EMS. And our personnel are consistently training, so we have 83, almost 8400 hours of training. Our public education division has done about 490 public education participants, and that's mainly through our fourth grade emergency exit plan contest. You see our state mandates are 103, construction inspections this year are 631. Our studio, Manhattan Studios, is 16 studio inspections. And our plan reviews in-house, like I said, is 551 this last year and calendar year '24. Some of our key objectives this year is to maintain our high level of operational readiness and emergency response. We're going to work closely with our IT department to bring our staffing to the cloud, that way a little better reliability, and also that translates into working partner with our finance department, giving our payroll out without any issues as well. Continue to work on our state mandates and get those in in time, excuse me. We're going to consistently monitor, continuing to monitor, excuse me, our updated EMS model with those two rescues and just look for other ways to be efficient and serve our community better every day. And then we're looking to, just with the anticipated major events we have in the area, just get in our EOC open and do more EOC training with our staff and partnering with our MB community as well as our CERT program and our ERG partners as well. So this year, some of our enhancements, it's actually ongoing, so we've, we've really taken a broad look at the department and how we can better be fiscally responsible. And some of that is just spreading some of our contingency replacement costs. So a couple of years ago, we did that with our turnout and our PPE equipment, we spread those over, instead of coming to council with a big bulk one year, we spread that over a five-year period, we get a little bit every year. So the EMS, the 100,000 there is the same thing. We have six ALS monitors, which are cardiac monitors, probably a piece of equipment we use the most outside of our fire engine. They're $50,000 each, that's replacing two now. We have six in the department, so it would have been $300,000, but we did. We're spreading that over three years. How we can do that, we actually approached the manufacturer, we had them service brought up to current standards, and then we bought an extended warranty, which would give us the other four, which should give us the opportunity to expand that over three years. Instead of giving you a $300,000 bill, this year, we're going to spread that over the three years. And then the, the next item, the EMS contract services, the $36,000, that's increased to pay our third-party administrator that does our billing for us. But that's a direct result of a good thing that we're actually cost recovering, so they get a portion of us. So as we're collecting more money, they're getting paid more money. So that means that we're collecting more money. So if we're paying $36,000 more, it means we're collecting more as well. So total general fund would be 136,700. Much like our partners in the police department, we're foregoing our radios, but we're working with our finance department of securing financing and also looking for maybe possibly homeless security grants and other opportunities, especially with, like I said, the major events coming to the area over the next five years, so. And no full-time position changes for us. With that, I will entertain any questions.
All right, thank you so much, Chief. All right, questions for the fire chief?
I can ask a quick one, because Chief, this is, as you indicated your last budget presentation and referenced in quick passing in the budget slide deck that you provided, is monitoring the new EMS proposal. We've had comments from the public about overtime and performance measures. Why don't you just take a moment to briefly describe what is this new model and how it achieves some of these issues that were raised by members of the public?
So the council approved last fiscal year, and then we implemented that in December of '24. We up paramedic rescue 22. Previous to that, we were contracting almost 30 to 35 calls a month out to a private third-party ambulance company. Now we're able to provide better service, provide paramedic care to all of our residents. And like I said, prior to December, we were 25, or 30 to 35 calls a month. December, we saw immediate, went down to five calls a month outside. And then January and February and March, zero calls. And I think this month, last month, we had one call. So the system's always working, and in turn, we're getting better service to our citizens because you're getting paramedics at every call, paramedics taking every patient to the hospital, the paramedic care. And in turn, we can cost recover at a paramedic rate, which gives us more revenue.
Less overtime, less call.
Well, overtime's, it doesn't really come into factor because it's the same amount of bodies we have there, but it's, we're seeing the benefit from better service and more cost recovery, so.
Yeah, so it doesn't actually impact the overtime.
And thank you, Chief, for initiating.
Yeah. That's great. Other questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. It's nice on the other side, so you have every reason to smile. So are you fully, right now, your personnel is, you're fully, you have your full boat of personnel?
We're fully staffed. We're actually overstaffed for probably another, actually, four days, and then one overstaffed person will be retiring, and we're fully, we are fully staffed, so.
Thank you for that, appreciate you.
Yeah.
Other questions for the chief?
Just a comment, please. Is, Chief, I really appreciate on behalf of all the residents of Manhattan Beach, your service. You came in at a difficult time. You had great experience and you, you just provided great leadership, you know, for, you know, representing, you know, your employees and also, you know, representing the city. And it was exemplary service and really, really appreciate it and wish you a full retirement now?
I don't know, I'm, like I still got some gas in my tank, so we'll see. But I'm moving out of state, so I'll have to do something out of state, so.
Well, I'm not saying anything yet because I believe we're going to honor you at some point, so I'm, I'm saving my remarks, I'm just keeping my powder dry. I appreciate you, but I'm not telling you yet.
We need something to hold them over.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. Okay, great, so no more questions? That's how you do it, folks, all right. Okay, parks and rec. Parks make life better. Parks and dogs, people, parks and dogs. I am, I love those dogs, man.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, Mark Lehman, your Parks and Recreation Director. Thank you for the opportunity to present our budget. Total expenditure is 13.6 million, we have 21 full-time positions. And then running through the pie chart, we have five program areas, beginning with administration, really the engine that drives the department, all of our communications, registration, reservations, recreation services, a lot of our bread and butter programs, after-school rec program, teen center, all of our park and facility operations, a lot of our large-scale special events, cultural arts operation, operating the ceramics studio as well as Manhattan Beach Arts Center, concerts in the park, a number of other classes, sports and aquatics, everything from working with our user groups, operation of bag pool, all of our beach activities and major special events, Manhattan Beach Open, International Surf Festival. And finishing with community programs, so citywide volunteer program, older adult, all of our classes and programs at the Jocelyn Center, and then transportation, the Dial Ride program, and that is 100% funded through Proposition A. So moving on to performance measures, you may see a few NAs, and that is because those areas will be updated with the next community survey, so it will be apples to apples with real data. But a few things that I did want to highlight are our revenues. Our revenues are increasing. We have some good trends for this year's spring and summer camp registrations, they were 11% up from last year, and we are on track to exceed our $4 million in revenue overall for the department. Also wanted to highlight, I know City Council had approved a number of public art projects, and so you've seen a lot of public art throughout the community, utility boxes, murals, sculptures. And you may have noticed, this shark mural has just begun this week and hopefully in the next few weeks.
Bite me. MPT.
Yeah, MPT for the MVP tonight.
So moving on to by-the-numbers, just a few highlights, our class registration's still trending at approximately 20,000 each year. We're, we're really excited, we had launched the court reservation app, Kaizen, and for our pickleball and tennis court reservations, since we launched it about a month ago, had 2,000 transactions, over $43,000 in revenue, and a lot of positive feedback, we'll continue that pilot and hopefully expand it as we move forward. And then as you heard at the volunteer recognition, just in the Parks and Recreation Department, 390 volunteers, over 15,000 hours. And as I like to highlight, in the Jocelyn Center alone, we have over 50 volunteers assisting with programs. And then the last data point is Facebook, so our subscribers are up 6% to nearly 9,000, and then Instagram up 15% to nearly 18,000. And then highlighting a few key objectives, beginning with the selection of Brussels Beach artists and artwork, I'm really excited about this, over 100 submissions, some spectacular artists. I know the mayor is leading the art in public places to submit, or excuse me, to select the top six finalists, I believe, in the next few weeks.
Yeah, I better get on that.
It's a lot of work. We also hope to start a lift pilot program for the older adult transportation, specific for medical rides. There's been significant need, especially in, in the El Segundo area, and we just don't have the bandwidth to provide that right now. And that would be a pilot program, providing four medical round-trip rides per month. Also looking to purchase a 18-passenger Dial Ride bus to accommodate larger groups for excursions and transportation. We do have the two new buses, which we love, that they are 12-person capacity, so again, this would really help us with, with those larger trips. Another item is collaborating with the LA County Library to explore the feasibility of a cultural library in East Manhattan Beach. I know Arroyo Associates is working on that community outreach, and they are just beginning that portion. And then last, I, I know this was reflected in the community budget survey, I know Director Lee's going to touch on this, but a, a number of Parks and Recreation facility improvements from Poor in Place at Marina Avenue Park, Polywalk Park, fence replacement at Marina Avenue Park, maintenance projects at Bag, paint play replacement, Sand Dune Park, Red House, Manhattan Heights, many exciting projects moving forward. And then last, budget enhancement and personnel, so beginning with the ceramics instructor contracts. So this is new class instructors, they will provide expanded ceramics programming, and these will generate additional revenue, which will exceed these direct costs. Regarding personnel, the senior recreation supervisor classification will be used instead of the cultural arts manager. This is really rightsizing the role for the current department structure. And then the last item is Mircoast tennis lighting. So this is, I know the school district, as well as many users, have been looking to hopefully replace these for many years. We are in dire need of, of new LEDs as well as new ballasts for all these. The $100,000 price tag, it is, it is significant, however, it's very difficult to access the light fixtures, and so that is why the dollar amount is coming in at that $100,000 mark. With that, that concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Okay, questions? Councilmember Loeser?
Just a quick one, on the 18-seat bus for Dial Ride, I'm just curious to what extent there's been a comparison of leasing a bus on an as-new basis opposed to purchasing a new vehicle, which would of course then need to be stored and maintained?
It's a great question. I, I don't think we've looked at the lease option, I know we are looking at a number of different models. We are looking at gas, electric, and CNG, and there's various pros and cons to each of those.
Right. To the extent there's not grant funds, obviously I think it would be helpful to compare those costs. Great.
Okay.
Yes, currently, the replacement bus is planned to be purchased using existing Prop A funds, local return funds that we have on hand.
Okay.
Go to Nina first and then...
Councilwoman Turney?
Can you tell us a little bit more about the, the pilot program, the ride share for older adults? That sounds, that sounds like a great offering.
Yes, and so a, a few years ago, we had Yellow Cab as supplemental service. And so unfortunately, they would not meet the insurance requirements, and so we just haven't had supplemental service in general. So there's been a need for, if a medical ride is delayed, then we may not have a driver available, and they may need to work out transportation on their own. But in addition to that, there's been a growing need, there's been new medical offices... There's been new medical offices that have, you know, just opened up in El Segundo. And so unfortunately, the way that we do the routing for efficiencies is we'll pick up a number of passengers. We'll go to Torrance Memorial and Little Company of Mary. And so we can't fit any additional passengers. And so this supplemental service will allow those additional medical rides for those older adults.
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Director Lehman, for that presentation. I too had a question on the new dial-a-rides. So the other ones you have right now, are they full electric?
They are not. They're gas.
They're gas. So but you're looking at other options for this particular one?
Correct. There's pros and cons to each electric. There's still a lot of challenges in other agencies that we've spoken to. The range is still not there and also having the infrastructure for recharging. There are some limitations as well with the CNG. It limits the number of seats available. So again, we're looking at a different, a number of different options.
Great. One other question. I know you guys do fantastic job with programming. And I noticed your revenues are going up, like you indicated. Are we continuously looking at opportunities to add more classes and generate more revenue, even though our revenues are going up? But are we looking at not so much a study, but just, do you look at it quarterly, annually?
Yes, absolutely. It's a, it's a great question. We look at those continuously. And over the last few years, we have increased. We've really maximized. We're, you know, every square inch of space within the city and every facility, you may see, our camp guide continues to grow. And we also look at increasing prices where, you know, where it makes sense. I mean, one example is the ceramics studio. I know we have increased prices, you know, operations escalate and a number of things are needed, from firing to glazes to, you know, clay, just operations in general. But we've also increased revenue over the last year, $100,000. And there's also that balance with the after-school rec program. We've received clear direction from the council of maintaining a reasonable dollar amount, monthly amount. So we've kept that in place for a number of years. But yes, we do continuously evaluate all of our pricing.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin?
Sure. Thank you, Mark, for the, Director Lehman, for your presentation. The lights at the, at the high school, Miracosta, is that the full price? Or are we sharing this cost? The school district just got a nice big bond measure passed and.
That is, I know, Director Lee can come down and address this.
No, I mean, just shout it out.
Right. Are they shared? Is that our part? Or, yeah, no, it's a fair question. I was going to ask you.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of the city council. Eric Lee, your Public Works Director. We've got obligations under the shared use agreement with the district to maintain this lighting. And so that's why we're proposing it as a cost for the city.
Okay, so it's full cost then? They're, they're not contributing anything to it?
Correct.
To the 100, to the 100,000?
Correct.
Great. And then I almost don't want to ask this, I probably shouldn't, but how is our balance between the cry for pickleball courts and our tennis courts and everything? I know you're running. Look at him run. Look at him run.
Year old.
So I mean, I would, I would say it's always a continual discussion and challenge. However, I would say overall, it's working extremely well. I haven't received a complaint in quite a while, so I think we just manage it. I know the team does on a continuous basis. But again, I know they do a good job of having those discussions and managing both tennis and pickleball operations.
Okay, good. So does Heights still have temporary courts? At one point, weren't they going out onto the basketball courts or?
They restripped Court, Court 1 and 2. And then the middle school still has the open play.
Yeah, okay. And we, do we charge yet for the middle school?
We do not.
Okay. Is there a reason why not yet or?
Again, I think it was early on, we're piloting it and we're, again, trying to find that balance.
I mean, it's used like 100% of the time, isn't it? That it's, that it's open?
It is used heavily, yes.
Okay. All right. So is it on the horizon to charge for?
I think it's something that we will look at and have further discussions about, especially, I can bring senior, senior manager Melissa McCollum down.
Because it's been at least like two years, right?
Good evening, mayor and city council. Yes, it is not on the horizon. It is certainly something that, that we can evaluate again. It would require staffing the courts. Right now, they are just open to the public for drop-in play throughout Saturday and Sundays and evenings when, when there is light. So it would require changing the model and having additional part-time staff. And we weren't looking at expanding the staff at this, at this time. But, but we could certainly take another look at it.
And so it is open in the afternoons during school days?
After 4:00 p.m.
After schools, after four?
When daylight savings time is, is the right time of year.
And then the whole weekend are holidays?
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Sure. Yes.
Do we charge for any, use of any of the school facilities? Like if we were going to, if we were going to charge for the pickleball at MBMS, do we have any other, you know, space that people use on the weekend? Like the basketball courts or anything that, that would require?
That's ours or that's theirs? Because you have the school district.
Yeah, I know. So that's where, like, where, where do we draw that distinction? Like what part of? And then if we were to do that, I'm just curious, like, what would be, you know, the process? And then how would those courts be manned?
So with the joint agreement, we, we schedule that for, we have not, we don't schedule the basketball courts. And for the soccer field, it is, you know, per-player fee for the user groups. So we do recoup some revenue.
Is that helpful?
But pickleball is a city program.
It's a city program.
Sorry?
But, yeah, so.
And use of tennis, excuse me, Miracosta tennis courts as well. In fact, we just had a meeting with the assistant superintendent today to try to expand our use.
Okay, so do we charge for the use?
Yes, we do.
Okay, okay, just curious.
I apologize.
Oh, no. Yeah, that's, okay. Thank you.
So it's interesting, when you have the meeting, I guess, I would suggest that maybe everything is open to a negotiation, to Councilmember Franklin's point. If, you know, if they want us to pay for the lights at the tennis courts, I would hope that they would also just give us more time when we're asking for it. So without, right, so.
Or, or just control, like scheduling control of the courts. Right now, you say it's open play, right? They just.
Well, you're talking pickleball specifically.
But not tennis?
Uh-uh. Tennis we control.
Well, tennis we already control. Well, no, at.
At the high school.
At the high school.
Yeah, so we do schedule tennis at the high school. And actually, we were looking to add 9 to noon during school hours. And so, because again, there's such a growing need for Marine League and private instruction. And so that's what we were having a discussion about. Again, with, you know, access and some security concerns, we are discussing what those protocols would, you know, would look like to make sure they reach their comfort level and that we have staffing levels there to.
Great. But they're not going to charge us for that?
Correct.
Okay.
They will not charge us, correct. They are not, they are not charging us for that use.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. Other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
May sit down, sir. Okay, hold on. We got, we got Public Works. This is not the CIP. This, just so you know, this is still departmental expenditures.
Hello again.
Hello, Director Lee.
Pleased to present the Public Works Department's proposed budget to you this evening. In Public Works, our mission is to build, maintain, and protect our small beach town community with a passion for excellence. As you can see here, we've got probably the largest budget in the city at this point, at $77 million. We've got 77 full-time positions. And I would note that the, that $77 million is actually about $2 million less than the current adopted budget. And so, you know, a lot of that relates to projects that have been completed because our CIP budget is rolled up into here. As well as we've actually taken a really hard look at our budget request for this next year to make sure we're only asking for what we need. And so I hope that you see that as we go through this presentation. As it relates to our performance measures, we've got five key measures we're looking at. One of those is percentage of construction contracts awarded. And so at the outset of the year, we set work plans for what we're trying to get out the door. And we've been able to hit that the last few years. We're also looking at water extracted from our city-owned wells. We talked about this a lot at our last council meeting. And while we're only projecting to use or to get about 4% of the water used in Manhattan Beach this year from our wells, next year, we are looking at a little over 30%. And so if you recall, we reported that with our water rights, we get about 20% to 25% of water usage out of our wells. The reason that's more is we've actually got water in storage with the water replenishment district that we're looking to draw down this next year because it's there for us. Our planned sewer lines cleaning, we're improving this year over last year and we're looking to hit 100% of that next year. And then two of the metrics that we're really proud of are graffiti removed within one business day and potholes repaired within two business days. And so we're continuing to hit high marks on that as well. Yeah, as it relates to by the numbers, a lot going on on this slide. Yeah, I will note that we did get our American Public Works Association Best Award for the fire station. And so very excited about our team able to pull that off. We continue to maintain 83,000 feet of storm, city-owned storm drain lines. We've got nearly 14,000 water meters. As this council is very aware, we clog your agenda with all of our agenda items with nearly 80 this last year. And so a lot going on in Public Works. We've got about a dozen different business lines we run. We've got dedicated staff. And we're just, we're very blessed to have staff that respond here 24/7 to deal with anything here in the city. As it relates to key objectives, yeah, as I mentioned before, we've got about 150 active work plans in Public Works right about now. You know, distilling those into, you know, somewhat of a top 10 list. Obviously, the council work plan items we have are at the top, which continues to be downtown and North Manhattan Beach beautification efforts. Couple meetings ago, you gave us the authorization to move forward with parking technology. And so we're working, moving forward on this parking meter and kiosk exploration. And that's, it's going to be beyond exploration at this point. We're going to be implementing soon. And the third one, community education on recycling and organic waste. Diversion issues continue to be a priority for the Public Works Department. And we're working with our holler to revise, present a proposal to the council to consider revising those diversion requirements. But organic waste and recycling are, are key areas that we're really trying to make some headway and a lot of education outreach with that. This next one, complete or make progress on 100 unique capital infrastructure projects. Our CIP budget, I'm going to present that to you in a few minutes, hopefully, so we can go deeper there. And then implement key recommendations from the city's parking operations assessment, including coordination with community development to complete the parking management study and initiate transition from single-space meters to centralized pay stations and mobile platforms. That really relates to that, that council work plan item that I just mentioned. Redevelopment of Lot 3 and 400 MBV properties. This is definitely one of our key objectives this next year. And we're looking to have the parking lot open, interim parking lot of Lot 3 open in a few weeks for parking cars there. This next one, optimize operations of the new water treatment plant to expand the use of local water, groundwater supplies. We talked about that. That continues to be a top priority. And I'm looking forward for our team to come back next fiscal year, requesting authorization to actually expand our rights in the area. Upgrades the supervisory control and data acquisition system, or SCADA system. This is the automated system that our operators use to monitor and control the water and sewage systems here in town. And so we're working on an upgrade and we want to get that completed. Water conservation continues to be an important program we're working on and regulations are continuing to be implemented at the state level. And we've got an item on the agenda for June to give you an update on what we're doing with water conservation. Implementation of our wastewater CCTV inspection program. The council will call, you authorized us to purchase a CCTV van. Our staff has been trained on it and starting to use it. And we're looking to get, get full utilization out of that, that van so we can actually get a good data source for us to do an upgraded, I'm sorry, updated sewer master plan. And so that's, this is a precursor for us to get a new sewer master plan.
So we could drive around in this van and watch the CCTV of the sewage system if we wanted.
The washing occurs when the van is parked. But yes, you could.
I'll take a pass. That's the bottom line. Okay, thank you.
It's a dirty business.
Oh, my gosh. It sounds like a waste to me. Not really.
And this last one, implementation of our water system flushing program. We've, we've made good headway this last year. And we actually are working with an engineering firm to optimize our utilization of our NoDez system. This is the truck that pulls up and filters out all the iron and magnesiums out of our water in the distribution system. And so we're looking to do that in a more enterprise fashion. So more of that to come.
Interesting.
As it relates to enhancement requests, we've got two different funds that we're requesting enhancements for. One being the general fund. And we want to purchase a mini excavator. And this is going to be split with the water funds. You'll see this again on the next slide. But essentially, this is going to be a piece of heavy equipment that is much smaller than the larger equipment that we use. It's going to be much easier for our staff to get in some of the tight, narrow streets here in Manhattan Beach. And should really improve efficiency in completing digging. And then we're requesting no additional full-time employees, but we are looking for two part-time maintenance workers. And what this is going to do for us is allow some of our full-time employees that are tied up on some lower-level maintenance work to be able to reallocate into the city parks and be able to take more ground in the care and maintenance of our parks. So these part-time maintenance workers will really be helping in the downtown and North Manhattan Beach areas with pressure washing and porter service and keeping things clean, allowing our, our full-time employees to take more ground in our green spaces. As it relates to the water fund, there's the other half of that mini excavator that I mentioned. We also are at the multi-year cycle point where we need to update our urban water management plan and our drought contingency plans. So we're requesting dollars to hire a consultant to do that. We need to increase security at our Block 35 reservoir. This is where the water tower is. So we're requesting funds for that. We've got that SCADA work that I was telling you about. We've got contract services that we need for that. This 348,000 adjustment to enable water resource allocation, that essentially is the fees that we need to pay to the water replenishment district because we're going to be pumping more water. So while we're not, we wouldn't be paying money to West Basin or Metropolitan Water District for importing water, when we do pump our own groundwater, we have to pay a fee to the water replenishment district. And, and that is an increase that we're looking for because we're going to be pumping much more.
But is, that is offset, so that's cheaper than buying it from West Basin?
Much cheaper.
Okay.
So it's about, I think, $500 an acre foot when we.
Purchase.
When we pump.
Oh, when you pump, okay.
It's about $1,500 an acre foot when we purchase. So we save about $1,000 an acre foot.
Thank you.
By doing this. Rough math, please don't hold me to that.
I computed.
And then this last one here, for 180,000 additional water distribution departmental supplies. This is really just, it's an accounting reconciliation. We had some contract dollars, but these are really supplies. And so we're trying to recognize that in the right account. And then lastly, we want to upgrade one of our utility technician positions to a cross-connection control specialist. This is in line with the cross-connection control plan. It's going to be presented to the council in the coming, I think, next month. And it really recognizes the work that this employee is doing with the ever-evolving state regulations related to backflow and cross-connection controls. This is something that we think is important to do. And then the last slide, I think I have, is budget enhancements that are being deferred and are not included in your budget, but just to reference that, we are thinking about these things. Eventually, what we'd like to do is get a, a senior Public Works inspector. We currently have two that are the same title and have one as a senior. And while there'd be some efficiency in doing so, now we recognize it's probably not the right budget time to do that. We want to add one senior civil engineer. And this would really just help with managing a very full plate of capital improvement projects. But we have some vacancies right now in our ranks. And so the likelihood of us getting another one filled is probably unlikely. And so not funding it this year and probably continue to rely on consultant project managers in the interim. And then lastly, we have a proposal we presented to the city manager. There was a supporting concept for this to insource strategically some of our construction inspections. So if you recall, whenever we bring a capital improvement project to you, that it's millions of dollars to hire a contractor to do the work, we often have. it's millions of dollars to hire a contractor to do the work, we often have construction management and construction inspection services associated with that. We do think that there's an ability for us to strategically insource a limited amount of that and cost savings associated. However, right now with the transitions we have going on in our engineering group and other priorities, we're going to defer that another time.
Okay.
And with that, I'm able to answer the questions that I'm sure you have.
Okay, colleagues, questions? You know, I, I want to make a comment. So you said increase security at Block 35 or security at Block 35. Is that a person? Is that a, a thing? Or are we not allowed to say?
These are envisioned to be physical security measures.
Okay, that's fair. I mean, that's enough, all we want to say. And I guess I want to point out that every department, it, it sort of, no, no department is a silo despite the fact that you're talking about the water tower here. I, you know, our, our good quality water, safe water is public safety, is a public safety concern, right? Whether it's the fact that it's a target of somebody's or whether the fact that if you have bad drinking water, you know, people get sick. I mean, your department also deals with public safety, you know, want to, want to point that out.
Thank you for recognizing that.
Yeah, no, I, it's so important. And so that's all. Questions? Yes, go ahead. Go ahead, council member.
Okay, great. Thank you. And thank you Director Lee. On the number of reported graffiti removed and the potholes repaired, what percentage of those you think were reported by the Reach Manhattan Beach app?
Oh, I'm so glad you said that.
I mean, just a ninety.
Ninety-some percent, I think.
Oh, really? Wow.
A vast majority of them. And that's certainly the ones that we're, we're statting and that we're really proud that we're able to respond to that quickly.
Okay, great. Well, I mean, just, I just want to point this out to our residents that how valuable this resource is.
Glad you said that.
You know, it's an app that can be found in your app store for whatever phone you have. It's Reach Manhattan Beach. And you can, from the palm of your hand, report potholes, report graffiti, report a whole bunch of other things. And you hear the kind of response you get within two business days, you got potholes repaired and within one business day, you got graffiti repaired. So once you report it, it, you know, it puts in the address, you can send a picture of it. When you hit submit, it goes right to the, right to your office, right?
Yes, well, it really goes, our, our field crews get them too.
Oh, okay. So right out in the field.
And, and you know, if I may, I'll, I'll remind the council that a few years ago, you authorized us to have a weekend crew handling maintenance issues in town. And so, you know, before, you know, Thursday afternoon at 5 o'clock, we got hit with graffiti at that point. That wasn't getting cleaned up on Monday. And with, with the app and with the vigilance of both the community and our staff, we're hitting that stuff on the weekend as well. And so it's not sitting, durning up our city and making us more vulnerable to other crime.
And also, it has a homeless outreach capability. We have Rita Crabtree compa here, the, with MB Safe. And so they appreciate it being used as well because same thing, residents can report homeless individual who may need some services and outreach. And you put that information in there and it goes right to the homeless navigator.
Yep.
And she's pointing, she's holding it up right there.
Right, Manhattan Beach. No, I'm glad, I used to bring it up all the time and I think I'm going to start bringing it up at every meeting again because it's, it's so good.
I, I want to do it first.
You can. I'd love for you to.
No, as long as, as long as the word gets out. So thank you for that. And thank your teams.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Director Lee. Congratulations again on the 2024 Best Award for your public, for the Public Works Association for Fire Station 2. I think that was done ahead of time and under budget and, and you got a beautiful award out of it. Is that fully up and running functional? Is it full functional right now?
It is. There's some punchless items we're still working through, you know, really to, to optimize it, but they're running calls out of it.
Great. And just to, just to thank you, I know, you know, just looking at your metrics, you guys just do so much and you're out facing, you've got really the boots on the ground and you guys are all over the place and executing at a high level. So thank you to you and your staff for that.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. All right. I guess, guess that's all we have for now.
Okay, I'll be back.
Don't go far.
Thank you.
Okay, any more puns? Joey, you got any more puns? Water, pipes, towers?
Uh, let's see, um, no.
No, we're, we're done.
Saving time.
Saving time. All right. All right.
I'm underwater.
Oh, okay. Drowning, okay. Libby, hello.
Good evening again. Libby Bretar, Acting Finance Director, and I'm pleased to present our finance department budget tonight as well. So just a quick overview, our department is structured with four divisions for administration, accounting, revenue services, and purchasing. And we have 21 employees with the additional accountant that was approved in May with our mid-year budget update to help support some additional accounting and audit functions that we have. And overall, our department budget totals $5.6 million. And you can find this information on page, sorry, on page 119 in the budget. So just to highlight some of the performance measures that we track and highlight every year, so we love to tout our city's AAA credit rating. We're one of, I think of about 40-some cities in the state of California who can say this. And we will be undergoing a, a rating affirmation process this summer as we are also working on the bond issuance for 400 Manhattan Beach Boulevard. So we'll be reporting on that in the coming months. We also always strive to achieve what's called an unmodified audit opinion every year, which is the, the best audit opinion you can achieve. And then we also strive to maintain our GFOA and CMF, CSMFO budget awards. We've achieved these awards for a couple of decades now. And this last year, we were also pleased to receive a special recognition in our financial forecasting section, which means that the three raters all rated us at the, the most points available. So we also receive an achievement in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association for our, what's called our ACFA report, our annual comprehensive financial report, which, you know, the budget presents the spending plan for the upcoming year and then the ACFA reports on the financial results after we close the year. And then the last metric we always report is our annual investment portfolio yield. You know, this varies every year depending on LAF and other interest rates. And we work with our elected city treasurer to maintain our investment portfolio. And so you can always look to our city webpage for the city treasurer to find the latest investment portfolio if anyone would like to check that out. And then we also present it to, on the city council agenda item every month as well. So just some high-level facts here about the finance department. We do a lot of processing and payment processing. So we issue about 5,000 business licenses every year. You've heard a lot about this in the last year as we did contract with a firm called HDL to help us process our business licenses. So that way we could take advantage of their online payment processing. So now businesses can renew their license online, they get their tax certificate emailed to them rather than our staff having to print and mail those. We've gained a lot of efficiencies through this process in the last year. We're also responsible for all utility billing accounts for all 13,000 customers across the city. So that means over the whole year, we generate about over 90,000 utility bills, which is quite a bit. And then we, customers can opt to still receive those in the mail, but a lot of our customers do receive their bills and pay online. So we also process almost 60,000 citations every year, you know, invoices that we issue to, and we take payment on. We, we pay about 4,600 accounts payable checks every year. We issue purchase orders and process P-card transactions. So a lot of data points here that, that's all we do is just process things every day, our team. So some key objectives, so one of the biggest things we're currently working on is the bond issuance for the purchase of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and for anyone who wants more information on that, if you missed the recent council meeting on April 1st.
Wow.
You can find more information on that staff report there, but our initial plans are to, we made the purchase in cash and then our plan is to issue bonds to replenish our general fund reserves. So take the money back into cash and then we would start paying some debt, some debt service on that as we, you know, the community decides the best options to put there. And then we would be refinancing it in about two years to, to finance the larger construction costs of what the permanent plans are there. So we're also, I think it was brought up earlier, we are working with other departments on a development impact fee study. So we hired a consultant and we're starting to work through that. Staff's compiling data and we'll, we expect to complete it hopefully by the end of the calendar year. We're also implementing a financial statement builder to assist in preparing our annual financial reports. And something new this year would be a, a new animal license software system. You've heard a lot over the last few years, we implemented our new ERP system in 2021. We did, so we implemented financials and payroll, then we did utility billing. The last module was licensing and so we just moved our business licensing to new software. So now the last piece, finally, like five years later, is how to process our animal licenses. So it's something we're working on currently and so we'll probably be back to council in a few months on that. Something we are also working on, but if we haven't built it into the proposed budget, but we, you know, might come back soon, is so we're looking at options to possibly take our short-term rental program and payment processing online. We're, we're just researching that, so we wanted to mention that. And then we're also working on various policies like our purchase cards. So as I just mentioned, we added $20,000 to the proposed budget for this, some type of software to process our animal licenses. The next item is a potential upgrade that we're requesting to, for one vacant lead account specialist and to upgrade this position to a management analyst. So over the years, in, in my time here in the city, we've moved a lot of our processes to online systems. We've found efficiencies, we've done technology implementations to add these efficiencies. So our, our revenue services staff is no longer sitting there opening mail, pulling out checks, bringing, sorting payments, doing the data entry. Before we implemented our munis and cashiering system, there was data entry into the old cashiering system and then someone had to also enter it into the financial system to put it on the customer's correct account. So there was duplicate data entry. And so we've really eliminated a lot of that over the years. But what that means is we, so we do less clerical and data entry, but what we need are analysis skills, reconciliation skills. So some higher level tasks is what we're looking for, which is why we'd like to adjust, reline this position to the duties that we need. And so the top process, the management analyst would be doing contract and vendor management as well as some of these like revenue analysis and other things like that. And the last item, it's come up, I think we talked about it with the mid-year report, we mentioned how our electricity costs have really been increasing higher than what we had anticipated over the last few years. And so we did appropriate some funds to do an electricity audit. So, you know, we're hoping, we, we budgeted for this expenditure of 46,000, but depending the audit could maybe pay for itself if they find something that in our favor, we don't know how it'll turn out. But that is a possibility because I believe the last time we did an audit years ago for some utility accounts and our phone systems, we ended up recouping some funds there. So, so I'm hoping that that's a possibility too. So that is a one-time cost built into the proposed budget. So a couple of things that we deferred, so something we've talked about internally is the addition of a payroll, like a payroll dedicated position. It's something our city doesn't have, which is unusual when we did comparisons to other cities. So this is an approximate cost. So that's something we might raise in the future. And then additionally, if we are able to find something that makes sense for us to utilize for TOT payment processing, we might return to city council at a future date to raise that idea as well. And that 60,000 is approximate cost there. Since we weren't quite ready to, to build it into the proposed budget, we deferred it. I just wanted to share those ideas. It's something we're talking about internally.
Great.
And that concludes my presentation on our finance department budget. Happy to answer your questions.
Great. Before we entertain questions, look, you've got them on their feet. I just like, so I, I do want to comment just in terms of the whole presentation and, perhaps I've forgotten, but I'm not sure in the past if we've included line items about deferred ideas or, you know, things that, and I appreciate this because I'm suspecting, and please, you know, inform me, that, you know, this is what the budget or what the department said, hey, we really need this. And then city manager said, hey, we have, we, we have to go tighten belts, do things like that. So these are the things you're saying, we would do this if we could. These are important, these are the next most important positions. I think this is useful information and I appreciate it. It's, you know, I think this year, and this is a comment more than a question, but it, you know, we are trying to figure out, how are we going to make these decisions, you know, in, in the final budget with the uncertainties out there? And I think that staff has really heard, you know, heard us and is saying, okay, we're going to defer some things that we really need or could use. And I appreciate that. And I'll just start off a question just because the electricity audit, Councilmember Shirley is always big on saying, well, are there grant opportunities, you know? And so I'm wondering, and maybe Brittany knows this, um, wait, she's not there right now. She was there. You know, are there grants out there in the world, whether through COGS, somebody else? Could that be some, something we could look at?
We could certainly look at that.
Okay. All right. Take it away, colleagues. Who would like to? Councilmember Shirley.
I'll take a stab. So just a couple of comments, maybe followed by a question. On the license software, has there been an accounting done? I know where the end of ERP, is there any funds in that?
Are we talking about the account, animal license?
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and we're at the end of the ERP. Isn't there some, enough money in the fund balance for the ERP for this $20,000? Because we didn't upgrade the business license system with the ERP. So has there been an accounting done of what's remaining in the ERP? Because we're at the end of five years. I think budget approved a million dollars in the beginning. So what's, what's left?
I don't have the number off the top of my head. I see Tatiana is still here. I believe IT is coming back to council in, soon with an update on the Tyler contract because that is currently being renegotiated because it is up for renewal. And then I believe Miguel also mentioned how we're looking at moving to the cloud. So, so I'm wrong, but I believe those, whatever savings we had was being kind of rolled over into the new contract costs.
Got you, so just rolling forward. Okay. And then, that's fine. And then what I would have liked to see in part of the budget was the TOT and land lease audit. We typically do that periodically. And I know we're doing the electricity audit or it's in here, we haven't approved it yet, but we're, we're looking to do that and we're looking for funds. But I think it's really important to look at the TOT and the land lease audit.
Yes, actually, that's budgeted in the current year budget and so it's on our internal work plan. Yes, so we haven't put out the RFP yet, but we're hoping to release that by the end of June.
Perfect. So you're carrying that forward to due?
Yes.
Excellent. That's all I have, Ms. Ademir.
Yes.
Got a quick, quick question on the, also on the TOT payments and the short-term rental payments. Is that, how are those presented to the city? I mean, is it self-reporting by the hotels and the short-term, short-term rental operators?
Yes, it is. We have a one-page submittal form that we require every month for short-term rentals. Even if they have zero rentals that month, we are, it is within our municipal code that they should submit the form stating that they had zero rentals for the month. And so that is, it's something we're looking at as the program has evolved and grown over the last few years, is how we can do more compliance efforts and that's something we're looking at.
So is that backed up by any reports from a hotel's property management system or?
Um, no.
They just put a number down where they don't show documentation of stays?
I think that's why we do periodic audits. We do periodic audits to get their backup documents.
Really? Wow. It's a, it's a lot of trust. Really? Wow. That's a lot of trust. Okay. And I understand about the new animal license software. I think it was because they were dog tired trying to do everything on their own.
Councilmember Franklin, if I could just add real quick a response on the last question. Code enforcement and community development does help with short-term rental enforcement and uses technology. Right now, we have a service through Host Compliance, which is a vendor that evaluates short-term rentals that may or may not be licensed. And we enforce on that to help ensure compliance.
So that's to identify people who maybe have not taken out a, do we call it a license or an application?
Yeah, it's a license. They also have the ability to confirm, that's the audit, I believe, that Libby was speaking to, is that they, their system sort of scrubs the internet and will tell you how many stays are, have been booked for a particular property and will compare that information to the TOT remnants.
Okay. Is this what a lot of cities do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a few companies out there that provide this service.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you for that. More questions for Director, Acting Director Bradour? No? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lou.
Human Resources.
Good evening, Council. My name is Lisa Jenkins and I'm your Human Resources Director. As far as an overview of the Human Resources Department budget, as you can see, oh, and if you're following along, it's on Budget Binder, page 145. As you can see from the pie chart here, the majority of our budget is actually part of our risk management program. So we have risk management, which oversees insurance, claims against the city, safety, workers' comp, loss control. And then we have human resources, which is labeled administration in the budget. And those functional areas are the traditional HR functions, recruitment selection, labor and employee relations, training development, benefits, those types of functions. So the reason that our risk management budget is, the majority of our budget is because that's where our insurance premiums are paid from. That's where all workers' comp for the city is paid from. That's where any claims against the city and related litigation expenses are paid from. So that's why the dollar amount is higher. The risk management fund is part of the insurance reserve fund and we'll be talking about that a little bit more tonight and then in greater detail when we bring a report back to council, which you've heard a little bit about already. To review some of our performance measures, so I'd like to highlight our recruitment efforts on here. At the top, you can see our turnaround time for recruitments. We've been tracking pretty close to 30, 35 days for the past several years consistently. As compared to, I think, a year or two before this, it was around 65 days turnaround. So with the addition, both with the addition of an online application system a few years back, as well as really looking at how we can streamline our recruitment processes, we've been able to keep our turnaround time for recruitments at a consistent level. And then if you'll look at our vacancy rate, it's the third line down. You'll be hearing more about this in an upcoming report to council on vacancy rates, which is a new law that we'll be implementing this year on the day of our budget adoption. A lot of agencies right now, a lot of public agencies are experiencing high vacancy rates, which, as you can imagine, has a negative impact on public service. So the fact that in spite of increases to our employee headcount and turnover in the last several years, we've been able to keep our vacancy rate relatively low is an accomplishment of our human resources staff. But it also, I think, indicates that the city council has created a work environment and provided benefits and salaries to employees that would enable our continued recruitment and retention of employees. So that's a positive and we'll be hearing more about that, like I mentioned, at an upcoming council meeting. As far as some key metrics that you may be interested in, I have highlighted this to council before, but you can see on the left in the circle that has a breakdown of our years of service for full-time employees. We have close to 50% of our employees who have four years or less with the city. So that's, yeah, an indication of kind of what the past few years have looked like in terms of turnover and recruitment. And this underscores the need to continue to focus on professional development and training for our employees. I believe Councilmember Sherrillian had asked during the police department presentation about employees hired versus turnover. So we do have the citywide metrics on here. And this includes full-time and part-time. So this is for calendar year 2024. We hired 133 new employees and we had 114 employees separate. So we are pacing hiring more employees than we have turnover, specifically as to the police department in the current fiscal year. We've hired 10 new employees and we've had six employees leave. So we are pacing ahead of our turnover by a bit. Some key objectives coming up for our next fiscal year. Right now, we're getting to the close of labor negotiations with four of our full-time bargaining units. Next year, we'll be negotiating with our firefighters association. And in addition to that, I'll be, as we look to increases in the budget, one of those increases relates to plan negotiations activities as well as cost increases. In discussions with the city manager, one of her objectives is to really focus on revamping our employee performance evaluation and coaching system. And this is more than just a new software that carries forward our existing paper system. We've received feedback from our employees over time about how our performance evaluation process could really provide more value to our organization in terms of coaching and mentoring and development for employees. And as I indicated with the tenure of our employees, especially with a lot of people in new positions, we've had a lot of promotional opportunities, which is a good thing for the city. Along with that, we need to give our supervisors and managers the tools to provide real-time coaching and feedback. So in addition to automating our performance evaluation system with some software that the council approved in a prior budget, we're also going to be providing some training on how supervisors and managers can move into a coaching mindset and build in more regular, real-time feedback sessions with employees that are documented in the system. So that's something we're really looking forward to in our next year budget. And our goal is to actually implement this at the beginning of the fiscal year. As I mentioned, we have a need to continue to prioritize professional development and training, continue to focus on safety and wellness. And additionally, something that has been on our work plan previously, but really, I think, needs to be an ongoing focus area with our policy procedure and handbook update. Because things change so rapidly in terms of new laws, workforce dynamic changes, we really need this to be a regular part of what we do. And so I'll talk about that a little bit more in terms of our budget increase requests. In this first block, you'll see some proposed increases. And these relate to two categories, primarily workplace investigations and consulting services that support that. As the city council is aware, when there is a concern or complaint that is a potential policy violation, the city is obligated to investigate that concern. And we're trying to align our budget really with the costs that we, the city's been expending over recent years. Additionally, increased legal services, as I mentioned previously, this does relate to negotiations. Both are labor negotiations, cost increases associated with legal services because those costs continue to go up like other costs do. But also day-to-day labor counsel and advice for employee and labor relations matters. So as the city council is aware, we have, you know, increased staffing over the past several years. There's, you know, a complexity of issues that arise. And having a budget that supports our ability to seek labor and employment counsel is important. I don't think I discussed yet the full-time employee headcount in HR, but we have remained static in our full-time staffing for about 10 years now at eight full-time employees. And the way that we've been able to do that in the face of increased workload and really demands is we've strategically aligned some part-time staffing resources to support different areas of the city. I've mentioned some of our accomplishments in recruitment and selection. And part of what's made that possible is having some dedicated support overseeing recruitment and selection activities. So this increase to part-time employee salaries would specifically support that policy and procedure, ongoing update work that I mentioned. We would aim to either accomplish this through part-time and if not, utilize a contract service. But again, this is something that is difficult for full-time staff to focus on. And it's something that is important to the organization to continue to update key policies, procedures, and have documents that are useful for our employees and relevant. And then the last slide does talk about the insurance fund. This is actually not the correct amount. The correct amount is 1.5 million. And I want to say about this line item. So this is not just claims paid. It's not just like a check that is made to resolve a claim. This is also litigation expense support for claims. And this, you know, traditionally we've budgeted 1 million for this line item. This is a very difficult to predict number because it varies from year to year based on what claims are currently active, based on when a claim may resolve. The timing of that is, we're not able to predict that. So if you look back at recent years, this number has gone from 3.6 million to 1.2 million to, I think, 4.1 million or 4.2. So we're really just trying to align our budget with what we think is our best guess estimate. But this is a really, I guess, uncontrollable cost in the sense of you can't predict how it will play out from one year to the next. And some of these claims increases that we've seen fairly consistently, they do relate to rising premiums. But, and now I'm talking about the insurance reserve fund as a whole, not just the claims paid line item. We have rising premiums. We have a market that continues to not, continues to go up essentially. Our insurance premiums continue to escalate and that's the insurance market as a whole. It's claims experience, but it's also just the nature of living in Southern California and fire activity and earthquake activity and the types of cases that we're seeing. And so that's part of it. Part of it is the actual claims and litigation expenses, which I mentioned, as well as actual payments. So traditionally, the budget for this claims item has been done with an internal calculation. And we've recently contracted with an actuarial. We have gotten actuariales from time to time regarding anticipated expenses as well, as well as how those would be allocated across our city departments based on both experience and what we would anticipate for the future. So the best practice is to utilize our actuarial report, once we receive it, to inform our budget. And that's the information that we would be bringing back to the city council later this year so that we can have a fully informed discussion about our insurance reserve And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions for Lisa, Director Jenkins? Okay. Oh, go ahead. I thought you would. I mean, I was hoping.
Is there opportunity to potentially raise the SIR to lower our premium?
What does SIR mean?
So SIR is self-insured retention.
Thank you.
So for both workers' comp and for liability claims, we have different SIRs. And what that means is what the city pays out of pocket until our insurance carrier picks up the claim. I think we've looked at that before in terms of if that would provide any benefit to us. I'm looking at our risk manager to see if there's something more recently, but I think that that's, there's usually a limitation on being able to do that.
It will be included as part of our actuarial. We will be evaluating the SIRs for the general liability fund at 750 and 100.
Okay. So we are currently evaluating that, raising the SIRs.
Great. That's, it's kind of like a deductible. If you raise your deductible, then your premium goes down. Let me see. Has there, has there been a kind of a significant change in the workers' compensation, like the general liability reserves are resulting in higher premiums?
I'm going to invite our risk manager down. I think workers' comp itself has been pretty static, but we're seeing the biggest change in our liability claims. But...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Breezy Morales, Risk Manager for the city. As far as the premiums and workers' comp, those are really heavily impacted, one by the increases in payroll and our experience in claims. Those are the main impacts to that premium.
Okay. And then our, our third-party administrator, have we, do we audit their, to ensure their reserves?
Oh, yes. I am in constant communication with admin sure and we regularly communicate regarding reserves on every case.
But is there like a formal audit to make sure that the reserves are accurate with their TPA?
Yes. They are audited.
Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Great. Thank you. Other questions?
Thank you.
You know, we're lucky that we can even get insurance. I have worked with cities, no, I have worked with cities that couldn't get insurance because the quality of their roads were so bad that they were dropped by all their risk pools. So think about, like, all these different things that go into every single aspect. With that, Ms. Latranya.
Hi. Good evening. We made it. My name is...
I don't know. It's only 9:28.
We'll get through this. My name's Alexandria Latranya. I'm the Communications and Civic Engagement Manager and I'm here to present the budget for Management Services. The Management Services, oh, I'm in control of this. Okay. The Management Services Department is comprised of five different divisions. So there's the elected officials, the city manager, city clerk, communications and civic engagement, as well as the city attorney. So we have 16 positions within Management Services and six of those are comprised and made up of our elected officials, so five of whom are sitting right here. The overall budget is 5.5 million dollars. And we'll go over some of the performance measures. And so this really is a source of pride for our employees. Two of the performance measures are put together by a community survey that we conduct every two years. And so we're right in the middle of that right now. And so we don't have that current data for you at the moment, but we will soon. So keep your eyes peeled for that. But what this does show is that residents rating the quality of life as excellent or good in Manhattan Beach is at 94%, which is pretty high. And so that's definitely a source of pride for the city itself and the excellent, an excellent example of the municipal services that we provide on the daily. And one of the other items on there, you can see the city continues to see an increase in new followers on our social media accounts and anticipates additional followers over the next fiscal year. The average increase in users' following accounts across all platforms was a whopping 42.9%, which we're very excited about. And the app experiencing the largest increase from 20... And the app experiencing the largest increase from 20 fiscal year, 23 to 24, was Instagram. And finally, the percentage of regular city council meeting minutes presented for approval at the next city council meeting, the clerk's office is extremely proud that that's at 100%. They always strive for that to be presented at the next regular meeting, and they've done that over the past year. And so in case you're ready for some more numbers, here, here's some key highlights of the things that we've accomplished over the last fiscal year. And that big number up there is a whopping 3,039 public records requests. So hands up for Martha, that was amazing and a lot to handle, so really appreciate that. And we've, it's remained fairly steady and saw an increase of 93 in the last calendar year. And the total e-notification subscribers, so this goes back to that GovDelivery system that I was talking about. We have 24,631 subscribers on our e-notification. So we have a really big reach. And obviously, we're, it's very rare that we would send out one email to all 24,000 of them because we don't want to lose those subscribers. We want to meet them in the interest that they told us they're, on the topics that they're interested in. But we really do have a gigantic reach and can reach a lot of, ability to reach a lot of people through our e-notifications. And just over the last year, we saw that rise to 10,500 or by 10,500. So we've really done a great job in trying to meet those subscribers where they're on the topics that they're interested in and not only maintain those subscribers, but increase them. And you'll see there that our average open rate is 55.1%, which is pretty good. So not only are people receiving them, but they are opening them and engaging in those e-notifications. And then the total number, number of published posts has reached 4,019, which was an increase of 2,869 since 2023, and led to a significant number of total impressions. So you can see that giant number over there in the orange on the right-hand side of your screen is at 5,193,000. So we're reaching a lot of eyeballs there with our digital posts, reaching a lot of people and getting our messages out and creating engaging messages. And on to some of our key objectives in 2026. There's a few things that we're really excited about in Management Services. The, we were looking forward to completing those executive recruitments. So we have a fire chief, a finance director, as well as a community development director to fill this year. We are also really excited about working with the community development department on engaging the community on the Project Pulse in downtown Manhattan Beach. And so that's that project on 400 MBB as well as Lot 3, and really talking to the community, seeing what they would like to see at those sites. So it's kind of a unique, once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for us to explore that. We're also looking forward to the city's participation as it relates to the 2026 World Cup as well as the 2028 Olympic Games. So we're very excited about those possibilities for, and different opportunities that might present themselves. And so Management Services will definitely be pursuing those over the next year. And as you've heard about me talk about before, the website, we're redoing our website, and so we've been hard at work at that. And that's definitely a key objective for us over the next year. And then the clerk's office will be working on the recodification of the Manhattan Beach Municipal Code so that it becomes compliant and is a comprehensive review and update reorganization of this code as it reflects the current regulations. And then we have a couple of personnel and service delivery enhancements included in the proposed budget. So the first one is to upgrade one assistant to the city manager to an assistant city manager and a downgrade policy and management analyst to a senior management analyst. And so at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager to add to that.
Thank you, thank you, Ollie. As the council knows, Manhattan Beach is a full-service city. We have nine high-functioning departments. We provide water service, fire, police, sewer. And the city also has a number of major projects ongoing in the community with a high demand for community engagement. We pride ourselves on delivering high-quality services with a lot of heart. Our residents both expect and deserve this high level of service and quality of life. Having assessed the everyday operations of the departments and executive team, and in order for us to make this sustainable for our executive leadership team, the upgrade of the position is identified as a necessity for maintaining our high levels of service delivery, part and parcel of which is having the capacity for performance management and improvements throughout the organization, as well as overall improvements to the health of the organization. With the current vacancy in a lower-level position in the city manager's office, there's an opportunity to ask for rightsizing this position for the organization without resulting in a net new position. Additionally, we further offset this by downgrading another position in the city manager's office, which is the policy and management analyst to senior management analyst position.
And really, that concludes our presentation for the budget for Management Services, but I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I wanted to make a comment or question, comment the newsletters that you mentioned. And you made a passing comment, we don't want to send every newsletter to all 24,000 people. One thing to consider is, so for instance, with the issues with the housing mandates right now and the residential overlay districts. I can see, I'm a Josephine resident, and I've put that I'm interested in cultural affairs and parks and rec programs. But, because I don't know if I'm interested in planning issues. I don't know that I'm interested in ROD stuff. So I think that sometimes we do want to send those kinds of things to everybody because you may not know you're that interested in it. Or if we have an update on the police strategy, a police response to what's going on in Sepulveda, even if I haven't said I'm interested in public safety. You know, those kinds of big things may be, you know, I don't know what kind of discussions you have internally, but I think that those are the kind of things to consider.
Absolutely, because you kind of don't know what you're interested in when you're filling out that form. So it's one reason, we, we kind of take different approaches depending on what the issue is and what kind of campaign we're really running. But if we're running a campaign about a specific, let's say, brand-new issue, so when ROD first kind of really emerged, we started collecting those email addresses. If someone sends in an email to you, we might reach out to them and say, hey, do you want to be subscribed? Because you can follow along on this story. And so that's another way for us to sort of capture that. We can also do that digitally on our social media channels. If you're interested in this topic, click here and you can, it'll take you directly to a link to update your profile.
That's, that's good you're doing. It's not quite proactive. I mean, you know, it's, but it, you know, we hear from a lot of people that I don't know about this. And it's, it's hard, it's, and I, people know that it's hard to pay attention to everything they should pay attention to. But we should always try, always and always and always to give them information. But, go ahead, colleagues.
Well, to that point, though, but you risk, you know, being perceived as, you know, sending them too many, you know, information they don't want.
That's what, yeah.
And, you know, and so it's a real balance. It's frustrating because we want to hear from as many people as possible. But I can also see that I get a lot of email, I signed up for this, and then they start doing this. Then I just say, forget it, I don't want any of it.
Yeah, that's to her point, so it's fair, that's right. Okay, who wants to go first, questions?
I don't know if he's done. Are you done?
It will be no surprise to you to know that I am still struggling with the notion of an assistant city manager position. I guess the way I would frame it as a question is recognizing that there's a need for further support in the city management office. How would the office benefit from a deputy city manager position?
Sure, we included some information in the staff report to distinguish typical deputy duties versus assistant city manager duties. So generally speaking, in cities, the deputy is equal to or below a department head level. And in comparison, an assistant city manager is higher than a department head level and is able to oversee. So typically, you wouldn't have a deputy city manager overseeing or responsible for or have the authority over any department heads. They would be assisting with community outreach and larger project oversight.
Thank you.
And, you know, we're, we have been talking a lot, well, I mean, we're not going to go into the merits of everything, but we certainly have been talking a lot about community outreach and how it's becoming more and more important with some of these, think about the big projects we have on the horizon. By the way, whoever came up with Project Pulse, I like that. That's a great, it was the pulse of the community, the pulse of downtown. Great. So, yeah, I, I'm glad we're going to do that. I, well, go ahead, more questions. I have some comments about some broader issue, but more questions.
If I may?
Yes, Councilwoman Breschlerian.
Yeah, I just, I want to follow up on what Mayor Protem was just asking about, the assistant city manager. And I appreciate the city manager bringing this up and sharing with us what we are. It is a full-service city, and we provide everything that we do. But what's changed in the sense of, we've always provided that. And, you know, we've always had big projects, whether it was building or whatever it might be right now that, you know, it's the rod and everything else. So what's causing that, I guess? What's changed? We've always been busy, we've always been full, we've never had more employees than we've ever had right now. So what's causing that?
It's the evolution of the city. It's not the Manhattan Beach of 20 or 30 years ago. There is a high vol, high volume of projects in the city. The expectations from the community have changed. The level of service expectations are different than it was 20, 30 years ago. The community outreach and engagement expectations have tremendously changed and service delivery levels. And so in order for us to continue to be able to maintain that and really focus on how is performance in the workplace, how can we improve performance? But also, are there efficiencies that we haven't tapped into? To really be able to study that and have the time to devote to that, the position is necessary.
And I appreciate the answer. Now, I guess I wasn't really talking about 10, 20 years ago. I'm just talking about relatively in the last five years. So, but, but...
I would say it was also needed in the last five years.
Okay. And then the only other question I had is on the, on the key objectives, you have complete executive recruitment. At what point in time, and maybe it's an HR question, do you go out and get a consultant, a subject matter expert in a high-level executive recruitment? When do you engage with them? And when you know, like, a department head is leaving, you usually have more than two weeks when a department head's leaving. When, when does that, when does that start? Because I just feel like it's taking an absorbent amount of time. I understand the challenges out there, we all do, but what's taking so long?
I can ask Lisa to come down to assist me, but I will say this is now second round of recruitments for two of the three positions. So first round was done in-house, proved not to be fruitful. And so we went, then it was, we were at a point where we have to expend the money to bring on a recruiter.
Yeah, and I, and I don't mind expending the money. I just want to know, policy-wise, when we have an executive recruitment? We have dynamic department heads, and as you mentioned, they're high-level. Like, why would we not just engage in, because it's an important money, important position? Why wouldn't we engage in that? All that?
Thank you for the question.
Engage in a recruitment, consultant?
Engage in the recruitment, in the consultant, yeah.
Yeah, thank you for the question. I think it, it just depends on the circumstances. For the two positions that we're now partnering with a recruitment firm for, at the time those positions became vacant, we were still, well, we were undergoing the city manager process. So as to finance, we identified somebody who was able to come in as our interim finance director. And during that time, because we had identified an interim, we needed to open the recruitment. So we opened it internally. But between that becoming vacant, it was another four months before the city manager recruitment was finalized. And we really wanted to provide the city manager with an opportunity to have involvement in the recruitment and also pick the candidate. Our first recruitment process, which we did interviews for, I think, in December or January for that recruitment, we didn't identify a selected candidate. And then that's when we went out with a recruitment firm. In some cases, like with our fire chief, the timing was a little bit different. And we did initiate a partnership with a recruitment firm right from the start. And then community development also, obviously, our city manager was acting for a period of time. And then the timing was such that we felt that it was a recruitment that we could attempt to do internally. And we just didn't find the candidate again in the first round. So I would say it really just varies depending on the recruitment. Sometimes we do go directly with a partnership with a recruitment firm. Sometimes we have an interim who's, you know, in the position and doing good things. And for a period of time, that's an effective strategy. So it varies based on the circumstance, I would say.
Answers my question.
And I would add that, like, sometimes the council, like in the past, I've been on councils before where we've said, oh, we can do this, we can just put out ads ourselves, you know? And just to try to save money. And sometimes it works and sometimes it doesn't. So I appreciate the, you know, the varied approach. But, I mean, you're right, as a subject matter expert, well worth their money often, so.
And on that note, I mean, there have been executive recruitments that we have done internally, and they've been very successful. So sometimes it works, it is a really difficult market right now, I'll say that.
Thank you. Yes?
Madam Mayor? So I'm just looking ahead at the projects that we have going on between, you know, Project Pulse, we've got the stormwater infiltration project, we've got World Cup, the Olympics, Super Bowl. And so I see, you know, some potential, well, on the, on the event side, potential to generate revenues. So I see that there are opportunities for our city to make money. But I also see some big challenges that you're going to all have to manage because of the, and the way that I look at, you know, just anything, is it cyclical? You go through periods where, like, we just had to replace all the pier railing, and then we have to... So all these projects seem to all be coming up at the same time. Now, I don't know if that's going to be something that's going to carry forth beyond the next three to five years. So as far as the assistant city manager position, I'm curious as if we need to engage somebody for a longer period? If it's kind of like the cyclical period of time where all these projects are coming up, all these activities are coming up? Is that a possibility to explore that kind of setup where we don't commit, you know, in a long term and create a permanent position? But just to help us, to carry us through this, this kind of challenging, very heavy-loaded time period?
I think so. And I think Lisa might be able to add some color to any potential pros and cons of that approach. But I, I think there's an opportunity for the council to request for it to be for a certain period of time. And so we would have to enter into a contract for that period of time. And, and maybe, there may be some challenges in having the right person apply. They would have to be, you know, it would have to be maybe their last three years so they know, okay, this is, this is what I need for three years, for example.
Interesting thoughts. Comments? Yes, sir?
Yep, thank you. So with regard to the, you know, to like the World Cup, the Olympics, Super Bowl in the adjacent area, do we see any major costs being associated with either hosting in some format or just the fact of, you know, a surge of people, you know, coming in and the managing of crowds and the like?
Absolutely. So I think it's...
And I'll frame this around the, around what happened with Santa Monica. You know, they were selected, and they called themselves the birthplace of beach volleyball.
Oh, they stopped doing that.
They had, they had the gall to do that. But, but, you know, they did have better parking facilities and things like that. parking facilities and things like that. And I remember at the ICA conference, talking to some of the people, you know, of the, you know, Santa Monica represented, and they were pulling out because the committee was putting a $15 million burden on them.
Yep.
You know, I don't know if that was, that they had to build the facilities, or it was just the fee that, hey, you gotta pay this in order to host it. So, those are the things I'm concerned about with, with these major events.
Oh, golly.
Yes.
Like, be, go ahead.
Oh, I mean, the mayor can probably speak to this as well, because I know she's been attending some of those meetings. But, the, the case of Santa Monica was very different. They were going to be a host city. That's not where we're at in the process. They've selected the locations where they're going to host the Olympics in the LA region, right? So, Long Beach was chosen and different cities, but, so Manhattan Beach is not in the running at this point for that. However, there are plenty of other opportunities, which maybe it's a host city, maybe it's hosting other types of events that might be attractive.
Hosting the Italian Olympic, like, not hosting, but that we become their city. I'm pushing for Italians.
Why not the Vietnamese?
Yeah, why not the Vietnamese?
Okay, whatever.
We don't have a big Olympic team.
No. But to the point, it's not a, I think your point's well-taken, council member. We, I don't think any of us are looking to, and we'll talk about this at a future meeting, my, my vision, and it's not stress, but is, we're not going to be building a facility for the Olympics. We're not going to be, you know, hiring, doing a big, major cost like that. But there will be costs in terms of public safety, trash, parking management, all the, but there will also be a lot of money made.
But will we be able to bill someone for that?
Well, we're looking to partner with our business districts as well, or local businesses who might want to bring a crowd here to maybe enjoy watching the game on a screen, or different types of opportunities that there might be out there. So, we're looking to explore those opportunities with our business partners right now, so we can get plans out for that. But certainly, there's nothing on the horizon for building anything to accommodate, you know, games or practices or anything. We have a ton of great facilities already, but nothing in addition to that.
So, we just had an amazing weekend, right? Because the weather was so, we were talking about, we witnessed crowds, you know, the biggest crowd in the last, how many years?
About 20 years.
About how many?
20 years?
On Saturday.
About 20 years, yeah, on Saturday. You know, the town was roiling, I mean, which was great. It was a lot of fun, a lot of activity out there. The restaurants were full, shops were full, traffic was horrendous.
It was ridiculous.
And, and this is what I'm concerned about. If we're gonna have a multi-day kind of event, and this, that, and the other, we gotta be cognizant of our downtown residents and things like that. But, and, and it's fun. I mean, there's no doubt it's gonna be fun. And, you know, we'll, we'll see what's gonna develop. If it's anything like the 1984 Olympics, and it was a pleasant surprise that the freeways were open and...
Carmageddon?
Things like that, yeah. So, it was great. I like the idea of redesigning the, the website. More suggestion than a question, can we put in a page of acronyms? I mean, every time I'm reading staff reports and the likes, and we got the whatever, 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 and then I have to go look back and, just have a quick reference, one sheet, you know, a couple of...
Great idea.
You know, I'm kind of laughing, because I think Libby found in our old archives a list of acronyms, like, frequently used acronyms. So, we could definitely revive that and pass it around.
Oh, there you go.
That is such city staff humor right there.
I love it. I'm here for it.
Great idea.
And then, I noticed the, you know, the, where is it here? You know, on, on the first page, as far as, you know, city attorney, you know, the 1.5 million, is that, is that typically bid out at a, at certain ranges, or times a year, or something like that, or times? I mean, is it just automatically remove, renew year to year, or is there...
It is an evergreen contract right now.
But it's not, is it dependent upon different cases? Like, is that, does that, other attorneys in the firm, is it different?
Maybe, can you repeat the question? Maybe I'm not understanding the question.
Well, just, okay, so you answered that it's an evergreen, but do we ever, at one point, you know, have either a formal or informal policy that after five years, we need to go out to bid again?
That's something we can absolutely discuss. I don't think that there's a formal policy, but we, we can absolutely have that discussion.
It would be in the, in the contract. And we, yeah, that's our purview.
Okay, great. And then, with regards to, to the Assistant City Manager, have we ever had an Assistant City Manager before?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and for how long, and what was the, how come it didn't keep going?
Those were unique circumstances. I mean, I don't know if we want to get into the detailed history. I can absolutely share that with you.
No, I mean, not the detail, I mean, but if it was, obviously, thought to be needed, but did it go for two years, three years?
I think it was. I mean, it's like 23, it was probably four years, 2013 to 2017. There were some political things that happened. I can tell you that our former city manager, Bruce Mo, said, we absolutely need a city Assistant City Manager. I mean, I could, you know, he didn't get one, but he said, yeah.
Oh, I mean, what stopped them? I mean, they're, he was city manager for how long? Eight years?
I mean, we have to ask him. Yeah. He was 2017 to 2024, actually, 2017. Anyway, go ahead, sorry.
Well, and then, in terms of, like, things that have changed, sure, things are getting more sophisticated, things are getting, you know, this is the age of social media. Somebody had asked me, well, does the, does the city need any promotion, you know, help? And I just want to go, well, can you have de-promotion, you know, in terms of, you know, we're, we're sort of bursting at the seams with some of these, you know, with these events and the like. I just think, you know, the comment was made that it's not adding a, a headcount, but it's adding the expense of a headcount, not a, not, not a fully funded headcount, but, you know, $129,000. So, I, I just want to take, you know, a deeper look at that and, and see, you know, I, you know, I heard your answers to why it's needed. It, you know, it is a challenge with, you know, with all the, with all the different departments, but then, that was a known, you know, that was a known quantity, you know, with, knowing that those are gonna be the responsibilities of a city manager. So, I just want to take a deeper look at it.
Well, I think, you know, we should take a deeper look at everything. I, I think, are you, I'm sorry, did I, I was gonna, and I didn't let you finish.
Well, okay, I mean, I was sort of addressing that to the city manager, but if you want to take that over?
Well, I don't, I don't think, I don't know, it's up to us to take the deeper look. But I, let me give my, I mean, I'll give my comments, and I, but I'm sorry I interrupted you, as I always do. I'm so sorry. I know what you're gonna say.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go home.
And you're gonna get interrupted.
No, Nancy's gone this week.
Oh, phew.
Well, the cat interrupts me.
The cat, the new cat, okay. Okay, Emmy, focus. It's getting hard. It's been, our meeting was supposed to be two hours long. Good discussion. So, I think what, for me, I look, I'm looking at this a little differently than a few of us. I do want to say it's, this is a, a little bit of a fraught time in, in the world, in the, in the nation with, you know, the economy. The economy is much different than it was back in October, and when the prior council, you know, hired the city manager. And, and frankly, one of my goals and, in, you know, has been, well, it doesn't matter if it's my goal. I know that our city manager has been really focusing on working with department heads, making sure their evaluations are up to date, making sure their performances are up to date, and making sure the people that they manage also receive performance reviews, and make sure that they receive updates on their performance. I'm not sure it's changed in the last five years in terms of, you know, well, no, that has, we, that has actually been a very different, I think, scenario than has happened for a while. I would also say that, and I think this might speak a little bit to what Stefan and Paul were talking about, when, I really appreciated the, the numbers you wrote down, or mentioned about the millions of dollars on, you know, labor, and how many full-time equivalents we have. And I'm gonna use it sort of, and try to connect the dots for a second, okay? Everybody bear with me. That doesn't tell the whole story, like, and I, I know you know it doesn't. Like, for instance, in Manhattan Beach, we have 34,195 residents, and we have 353 full-time employees. So, that kind of gets down to per full-time employee, or 96 residents per full-time employee, okay? Beverly Hills, 31,658 residents, to our 34,000, 840 full-time employees. So, that gets down to, for every, you know, full-time employee, they hit 37 residents, right? Now, we all know that Beverly Hills brings in a lot more revenue with the, you know, their shopping, their retail, all that. We know that Beverly Hills is the creme de la creme in, like my French accent, in services provided, you know, and, and in expectations. But we also know that our residents here and, you know, are expecting more and more. There's no one here who says, well, I don't live in Beverly Hills, so I can't expect to be safe in my home. Well, I don't live in Beverly Hills, so I don't really expect a nice park program. We expect the best. The, you know, if you're buying a new house here, it's not because you say, well, I don't really deserve X. So, I, I want us to, I don't, we don't necessarily have to compare ourselves to Beverly Hills. I don't, I think that's a fool's errand. And I think, you know, we will go broke trying to do that. But Santa Monica, now, Santa Monica has 93,000 residents, 2,122 full-time employees, okay? And I don't think any one of us would sit here and go, yeah, Santa Monica, that's, that's the standard. Yet, they have 44 residents per full-time employee, okay? So, it, it, again, that doesn't, does that tell the whole picture? No. None of it tells the whole picture, but together, it all tells the whole picture. So, what are our expectations, and this is not a question to answer tonight, what are our expectations for our city manager and the staff there? Whether it's the Olympics coming up, I don't, I'm not sure that's even part of my calculus, frankly, even though y'all know how excited I am about the damn Olympics. I want us to understand where we are in history, where we are in our time. And as to the former Assistant City Manager and the former city manager, it's apples to oranges, if you will. I would want to see, and, you know, how does this affect the org chart? How does this affect organizational efficiency? You know, I want to be sold on that, because it is a lot of money. I mean, that's the thing that we all up here are, well, maybe there's other things, but that's, that's a legitimate struggle right now. I'm not, you know, not sure. But I, I just think that we have 353 full-time employees, and I, you know, I have a list here of all, you know, of the different ones. There's El Segundo, they have 45 residents to each employee. I mean, and the reason I started thinking along these lines, and I know it's late, and I can't believe, maybe I'm making sense, maybe I'm not, when I was on the school board, when I was young and on the school board, this was a common metric that was used among school districts. You would see how many certificated employees, teachers, you had per students, and how many classified employees you had per student, and you'd see combinations. But it was kind of a way of showing your class sizes, a way of showing, you know, how you were spending your money. And so, I think we're doing a heck of a job for our residents. I don't think we're fat. I'm not saying let's add somebody in every department, but I'm saying, let's, let's consider, let's just think about those numbers as well. Want to think about another number, and that number is one that is based on the 60 seconds in a minute and 60 minutes in an hour. It is 10:05. We have not started our capital improvement plan budget discussion. And we were never gonna make the decision on these tonight. These were just some initial thoughts. It deserves a deeper look. All of it deserves a deeper look. We may come back at the next budget discussion and make decisions and cut things. We may add things, right? Those are all possibilities. One of my colleagues say, can we even tackle the CIP discussion tonight? I have my own thoughts, but I'll stop talking. Anyone? Fair?
I first want to understand the framework of our budget workshop on our operating fund, our general fund. What is the framework we're looking at? I mean, I appreciate your, your comments just now on the Assistant City Manager position. I might have a different position.
Yes, sir.
Are you looking for direction tonight, so that you can bring back a final budget when we bring the budget back for approval? Or is this just an opportunity for us to have a general discussion and receive and file?
Yeah, we're certainly looking for any feedback or direction, if you're prepared to give that tonight. There is actually one last slide, Martha, maybe you could...
And then, I'm happy to address the CIP. It appears that on the schedule at the end of this item, or actually, the staff report, there is, that there already is a place saver for next week's council member, council meeting, to be able to continue our discussion.
There's our answer.
So, we have an opportunity to address the CIP next week.
Yes, I believe both, we're planning to have a budget and a CIP item on the May 20th meeting already. So, if you have any immediate items that you'd like us to try to include in the budget staff report, we'd be, you know, happily take that tonight. But that concludes the budget portion, and I'll let you decide.
Well, I think, though, I don't think we could do the whole CIP during a regular city council meeting either. I mean, I think we'd have to do the 27th. We have a potential other study session set up, right? I think at that, what I would, and if I'm wrong, I mean, I'm, I'm one person, I would think on the 20th, we kind of go back, we digest, we come back, we say, you know, based on a lot of stuff we saw, here's some comments we have on the budget. Yes, I'm in favor of this, no, I'm in favor of that. And they take that in. I don't know, that's how I kind of thought it could happen, because how could we do a CIP section on a whole...
So, my challenge is, I'm gonna be out of the country, and I came prepared tonight to go into both items.
Okay.
And obviously, our discussion's going on and on and on. And I'll defer to whatever the council majority wants to do. If it does seem late now to get into our CIP, I would defer to our next meeting. This is a high priority item. It is worthy of the conversation. But perhaps we can be a little more efficient in focusing on what is really open for discussion, and maybe set up what the discussion items are, and then get into it.
Are you, are you talking about for the, the CIP, or for what we've already discussed?
At a minimum, for the CIP, because I thought that was your question, do we talk about it tonight? Do we try and defer it to the meeting on the 20th? Or, again, I defer to the majority. I just probably won't be able to participate if you move it to the 27th.
Madam?
Okay.
Do you mind?
Go ahead, go.
Thank you. Yeah, and I too, I, I feel, you know, the Mayor Protem's input is gonna be very valuable. I think the next council meeting, I think we should do the CIP. I think it's very late to get into, to that. And I think we should all be, be better, come better prepared and have structured questions, so we can move the CIP along at a regular council meeting. But looking at this timeline, you know, there is an opportunity. You don't have to adopt the, the budget on June 3rd. You can adopt it on the second meeting. You could have another study session on the 10th if you want, June 10th. So, let's not try to rush this through just because it says June 3rd. You have the entire month of June, and we can digest it, do our due diligence, and do what, you know, we're all up here for.
I, I, hold on, hold on. Go ahead. I was just gonna say... I, I, hold on, hold on. Go ahead. I was just gonna say, of course.
I was just gonna give some input to it.
Yeah, I want, I was gonna respond.
I was gonna ask, is on May 20th, does it look like there would be time on the, the agenda for the CIP?
We have a lot of items on the 20th meeting, so it's not a light agenda, if that's the question.
Could we, could we have a CIP, could we start two hours early, an hour early? I mean, I, I want, you, you know I want your input.
Yeah.
Do you? I'm kidding.
I, I think that would be a good idea, if we could start an hour earlier.
An hour. I'll split the difference because I know it's a whole agenda.
Because the presentation is 30 minutes, then hopefully, you know, we'll spend some time before then, just go through it and have some questions and then hopefully.
I think we need to plan a couple hours for the CIP.
A couple of hours.
And also tonight, we still have to ask, you know, allow the public to ask questions.
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding me that. And I, and to be clear, there, I am grateful, and I, we can keep talking about the ACM position. I wasn't trying to stop that discussion. I'm pointing out a global thing that I think on this issue, but also all the discussion we've had tonight, all the questions have been so good. I, gives me a lot to think about. I'm not willing to say for any department right now, do this, do that, do the other. I mean, I, I have to come back. I can't, I can't give direction tonight on that. So what do y'all think about, I don't know, I don't know if we can have it early, but we can't do it all on the 20th. I, I know that agenda.
We can start at 5:00 PM if the council would like on the 20th.
And just with the CIP or with the whole meeting?
We could push the whole meeting forward.
Yeah, because we haven't agendized it, or we haven't posted it yet.
Sorry. We had currently asked if there was gonna be a closed session, but since there doesn't seem to be one, we could start as early as four as an adjourned regular. But we still have the regular meeting at six, if you wanted the one subject item.
But it would be a public meeting.
It'd be a public meeting.
It's definitely shorter. I think five.
Steve, since, if we can extend the timeline, can we start on it and then continue if we need to and add on? Because I would rather be a question. This is a lot of information to process. And so maybe if we just take it chunks at a time and then come back with both.
You know, 100%, you would definitely, it's a, it's a moving, kind of, process.
Start at five. Wait a minute. Is that, what, what are you, can I have your thoughts on this? I mean, is that, does that help you?
I think starting at five, that would be true.
Yeah.
I mean, but I also want to say that we may have to still have a session on the 27th if we don't get finished, if we need to, you know, come back. But I think if we do this, we'll at least get, you know, and we won't make, on the 27th, if we have to do, and I'm, I'm, we're having a discussion here. If we have to have a meeting on the 27th, we won't be making any decisions. It would be a study session. I, I, I would want the full council here and certainly my partner in crime since 2011, so.
Yeah, and I, and I agree, if we don't need to meet on the 27th, it's advertised as if, as necessary. So it doesn't...
We don't, we don't. But if we do, we do.
Okay.
I mean, if we do, we do. Okay. All right. So I think what we're saying, we're gonna take public comment, we're not, but we're going to start at five with the, with the whole meeting, correct?
So that we can, yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Yes?
My only suggestion is, can we do the CIP at the beginning? I, I have to look at the agenda, but, so that we get kind of fresher public input instead of at the end. Sometimes I think people leave if we go too long. What do you think?
It would be the first item, right?
No.
Would it?
Right, right now it's got, you know, it's under general business.
Yeah.
So under...
So can I just clarify? The, if you want to do the CIP at five, it has to be an adjourned regular meeting, separate. The regular council meeting still starts at six.
Okay.
Two totally different titles.
We can separate it out, but then that limits you to an hour.
It limits us to an hour.
Regular meeting starts at six.
I think that's what we should do then. For some reason, I should move the whole meeting. What?
An hour should be fine.
Well, it's gonna have to be fine.
Yeah.
And, okay. So now, does everybody understand? So now, and I'm saying that to myself, we're gonna CIP study session at five next week before the regular meeting. And we start, what happened? We start our regular meeting at six. Okay? If we need it on the 27th, we'll do it.
I defer to your conversations with the city manager and the city attorney, as well as the city clerk, to design what would make the most sense for how you order the agenda starting at five?
We have to.
We could, we could have an adjourned meeting starting at five devoted to the CIP, and then we would close that and initiate our regular meeting at 6:00 PM. We could also include the, keep the CIP on that in case there is an extended discussion.
It's part of it. It's, it's there on the agenda now, but we can't, right. That's how, that's how we're doing it.
Is there any support to start it at four? The only reason I say that, if you stop the, if you stop the CIP, the momentum of, of a very important document in one hour, and then you got people coming in for a regular council meeting, I would recommend four o'clock.
I recommend four as well, but I saw that there wasn't, you, you would do four?
I'm, I want to defer to my colleagues and their schedules, particularly because I'm, I'm unable to come on this.
Don't, it's okay, it's okay. That's, four o'clock, I mean, I'm with you, council member. I think the CIP takes time. I have questions about it and our approach to it. So I, I'm fine with four.
I can do four.
At, on the 20th.
The 20th.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
I'll bake cookies. I will. Taco chip.
I have to move something around.
Is that your favorite?
I, I think I can move it.
Okay. All right. I appreciate my colleagues. Yeah, because we can't, we can't talk about this now. With, if my colleagues would indulge me, we'll open up for public. Okay? All right. Uh-oh.
Stefan Kumpa here one more time. Again, some really good conversation. Just one, one question for Public Works. I know when we looked at Lot 3, we had a lot of issues there. We talked about it in one of the public, one of the council meetings, that we have other aging infrastructure. And I don't know if we have a plan to go study all the other aging infrastructure, if that's, should be a goal. I don't know if that's something that's been accomplished yet. I missed a couple of meetings, so I apologize. But if not, I would encourage that to become a goal. Second one is, on the finance on the electricity audit for $46,000, I've never seen or known what an electricity audit is, but $46,000, I'm just wondering what, what we get out of that. You know, so we get just a quick blip on that one. And then we've had a lot of conversations on salary. I think at a future council meeting, I would love to hear a little bit more due diligence. Amy, who, council, mayor, I liked your comparisons that you were doing. I think, you know, just, we heard some concerns over here earlier. It would be great to have a little more due diligence. It's a conundrum to me. When we, when I search online for comparable salaries, we're much higher than what I can see online. But then I hear we can't hire people. Something just doesn't sound right to me. So I would really like us to see if we could set up a separate topic at one of our council meetings where we go into some depth on this one.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stefan, for your continued attention.
I really have more, just a question versus a comment. And I'd like to ask this of the city manager and the acting finance director, in terms of how frequently do you meet with your department directors and go over any budget variances that there are in each department? Is it a monthly program, quarterly, semi-annually, annually? How frequently does that occur?
Okay. We don't mean answer, well, I mean, you're welcome to, we don't.
Maybe, maybe if he asks all of his questions.
Okay. Are there more questions? No, that was it.
No, that's, that's really the main question that I have.
Okay.
We do monthly reporting internally and then also additional quarterly reports as well.
That's reporting, but holding the department directors accountable to those numbers, is that done at that time? Okay.
Thank you for the question. And thank you for being able to answer it. I, any other public comments online?
We do, we have somebody with the name of iPhone in the system.
Okay, iPhone.
I'm sorry, this is Steve Debase. I didn't realize I had, not identified myself. I apologize. I just want to follow up on Director Mark Lehman's information on the recreation items and specifically the older adult programs and just give you guys a little insight into the programming that's going on at Jocelyn Center. Just highlighted a couple of, of activities here. The Zumba class is maxed out each week. The agility, balance, and coordination class just started last year. It is now two days a week, and it went from seven participants to 72.
Wow.
Yeah. The discussion group, which is on Monday, used to be just eight gentlemen sitting around the table talking, is now grown to 35 participants, women and men, discussing all kinds of topics. The women-to-women discussion group is maxed out at 30. And then all the iPhone classes, whether it's beginners, advanced, or the class that the iPhone store participates with us in, that's maxed out at 25 people also. And that's, those are weekly events. So, and that's just highlighting a few of the activities that go on at Jocelyn Center. As Mark Lehman mentioned, we are bursting at the seams. We would really appreciate your continued support for the, the community center on the current scout house location. And if we can move that along as quickly as possible, we do appreciate all the work that the city and staff have gone into to make this possible. And we're just really excited and really anxious to see if that happens. So thank you very much for the time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve, for everything you do.
Wow.
We have Jill Lampkin.
Good evening. Jill Lampkin again. I just wanted to say that I believe one of the items that's to be on the agenda on the 20th is the shared refuse enclosure, which I know will have a lot of discussion. So I, I agree with all of you that the budget is the first priority and, and needs to have a lot of discussion. So if, if there's an item to move, that might be one, because I think that there will be a lot of interest in that particular item.
Thank you, Joe. I think we had talked about it being first meeting in June. And so, yeah.
There's no additional request on Zoom.
Okey-dokey. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor, you may already be inclined to do this, but I wanted to respond to some of the public comments and give staff a quick opportunity to address some of the concerns that members of the public are raising. But in fact, I think staff is doing, if I might.
Oh, please.
So can I just quickly just jump in? There was a question about whether our aging infrastructure is being studied on a regular basis. I think there is an answer to that, and it's a, it's one that can be summarized, that I believe is occurring on a regular basis. Is that right?
I'll turn it over to Public Works Director Lee.
These individuals, members of the public have been here for, going on four and a half hours. And I thought, they raised some good comments, and there's a, there's an answer for their question.
Thank you.
So, so yes, we're regularly monitoring all of our facilities. And, you know, Lot 3 is a good example of that monitoring. And we pulled the red flag to take it out of service because it was getting to a point where it was problematic. Yeah, as it relates to long-term studies, the last facility study, I think, was done probably over 10 years ago. And so that's, that is something that we should be, we should be looking forward into the future. There's nothing programmed in the CIP that we're gonna be presenting next week to you in that regard. But that, that is certainly something that we need to be doing at some point.
Yeah, so a whole study. That was 2016 or 17 when we were still on council.
There was this initial question about budget variances. There was an initial response. But I thought the budget variances are something that's part of this budgetary discussion. That's why there was a comparison of the last year with the current year, correct? Or how would you maybe provide just a little bit more of a response to the question about budget variances, which was just asked?
Sure. So the budget document includes the prior year actuals, the current fiscal year budget, and then also our mid-year year-end projections that we update throughout the year, and then the proposed budget. So each budget document has three years to compare to. And then throughout the year, we do the, a quarterly budget update and then a mid-year budget update as well.
There also was a question about salaries. Is there a general comment that can be made to address concerns about salaries and the sort of caliber of employee that we attract here? And the competitiveness of some of these positions?
Anyone?
Good evening again, council. I guess I would say that I think that we're doing pretty well in terms of recruitment and retention. As I mentioned previously, there's some state legislation that requires agencies to report out publicly on vacancies. And the legislative intent is the fact that many cities have experienced vacancy rates, like, at a 20%, 30% level. We're currently at 9.5%. And given the increases that we've had in staffing, as well as some turnover over the years, I think that that, in the current climate, is a, is a good vacancy rate. And so I guess in addition to efficiencies that we've gained in recruitment and selection, I would point to our salary and benefit offerings as one of the reasons that we're able to remain competitive. Now, that's not to say that we're at the top of the market. I don't think that's true by any means when we look at just salaries and benefits. On the broader question that one of our residents asked about how do we compare to other cities, I think the mayor tried to offer one comparison, which is employee for every number of residents. And obviously, there's a lot of different factors that play into that. There's daytime population, and there are services that are provided, and expected level of service. Another metric that staff has looked at in the past is a comparison of our salary and benefit figure, which was mentioned, to both the general fund, as well as to our overall city budget. And so we've done that comparison with other cities within the area in the past. And I know that, from my recollection, that was around average. So if there is things like that, that council would want us to update to provide updated information on those types of comparisons, we can certainly do that, understanding that not everything is an apples-to-apples comparison, because not every budget is going to account for different line items in the exact same way.
Thank you. It's close to 10:30. Your city attorney's not here. I think we're almost done, but I'm just curious if we need to make any sort of motion to continue beyond 10:30, or we just, okay, we're almost done.
Just recomplete.
Okay.
Way.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
No.
Up to you. Are we done? Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. So I think we have clear direction in it. We're gonna start at four o'clock with the CIP discussion, and we'll adjourn that and do the regular. I think that's the cleanest way to do it. So let me, we are adjourned to four o'clock on the 20th, correct? Study session beginning at four o'clock on the 20th, right here in chambers. All right. Good night.